I'll call this meeting to order. We got a very large crowd here today. If you would like to participate, there's on the screen, there's a number to call in or Zoom link. Also, it's on our, posted on our agenda. With that, I will ask everyone to join us in the floor.
......................................................
So with that, can we please get a roll call?
Commissioner Scavdall?
Here.
Commissioner Levy?
Here.
Commissioner Mulder?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner West?
Here.
Commissioner Curiazzie?
Here.
Commissioner McFarland?
Here.
Thank you.
Are there any agenda modifications?
No modifications.
Okay. With that, I will go to public comment on non-agenda items. First off, I will open up to the members present in person, which I'm counting zero. Next, I will go to Zoom, which I only see rapid text captioner, but I'm not seeing any hands up. So with that, I will close public comment on non-agenda items and bring it back to the commission, where we'll turn it over to staff for planning commission training.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm Destiny Valeska. I'm the deputy county council assigned to the planning commission, and I also represent the planning and building department for current planning issues. There's other attorneys assigned to long range in housing and stuff, but you guys don't have to deal with them. So today, we're going to have a presentation on a lot of items, and I am sorry for the length of this, but I heard that I had the whole session to myself, and I said, why not now? So we're going to go over due process, fair hearings, ex parte communications, the Brown Act, the Public Records Act, some land use and environmental law, and then I'm also going to talk about some resources that planning commissioners can utilize. I'm going to try and do this in phases, so after each concept, I'm going to pause, and we can ask for questions then, so that we don't run to the bottom and you forget your due process questions or something like that. Laura, do you have the PowerPoint? Did you want to pull that up?
The presentation computer is not on. If you could do it via Zoom, that would be great.
You do it. I can't see anything else.
No, I'll share screen.
All right, great. Next slide. So the first concept that we're going to hit is due process. Due process is this amalgamation of concepts that we've had since the Magna Carta, which was in 1215. There's not really a precise definition. I'm sure you've heard it mentioned multiple times. It's even in our constitution a couple of times. And then we have two types of due process. We have substantive and procedural due process. So...
Volume, can you...
So, talking first about procedural due process, those are a lot about notices and making sure that the process is followed. So that's hearings need to be by reasonable and partial non-involved decision makers, that there's this free exchange of information, and that everything is properly noticed. This is noticed to, in our situation, to the public. Our agendas also have to be properly noticed. We send out certain mailings to people who requested things like that, as well as following process, which is processes articulated in our Humboldt County Code, as well as internal policies of how to get from application to planning So I'm just going to cite for administrative orders or decisions, which is what this would be considered. The civil code for that is that we're required to make a discretionary determination based off of the facts in the record, and it needs to be supported by substantial evidence in light of the whole record. Substantial evidence is also one of those movable phrases that courts use to decide whether or not there is enough evidence in the record to support a decision, or whether or not it's arbitrary. So looking at the different types of acts that the planning commission takes, there's adjudicative or quasi-adjudicative acts, and there's also legislative acts. And due process is offered on a spectrum. The most due process that usually needs to be offered happens in criminal trials. And then the least amount is probably legislative acts. So for quasi-judicial acts, that would be when an official determines how certain adopted policies applies in a given situation. So that's what we would see with our first Thursday of the month hearings. Those are project-dependent, individual projects that you guys are hearing and considering based off of different county code. Legislative acts are what we usually see on the third Thursday of every month, which are coming from the long range. Those are ordinances for consideration, certain resolutions, things like that could also be considered legislative acts. For quasi-judicial acts, there needs to be a higher degree of due process afforded. We, you're conducting a public hearing, that's why you need to make sure certain ex parte disclosures are made, things like that. Notice is appropriate, public comment is appropriate, so that we can say that we've been affording people the rights that they are allowed under the Constitution. Legislative acts, you don't normally have to have so much ex parte disclosure as you would maybe a quasi-judicial act, but it's very good practice to just make ex parte disclosures at the beginning of every project or hearing. So one reason that you could be not affording due process is if a decision maker is not neutral. Decision maker is not neutral if they have a conflict of interests, if they have prejudged facts to a case before the hearing, or if there's an actual bias or unacceptable probability of actual bias. So prejudging is if you go into a hearing and we find evidence that was stated that, no matter what, I'm going to deny this project. If that were to come into court, the decision would likely be overturned. And so you have to keep an open mind to the hearing and allow people to submit their evidence at the hearing. Otherwise, there would be a conflict. Actual bias is a, is a, something that you could also do in terms of whether or not you like live close, if you have a private interest, or if you just really hate the project for some reason, and that's shown in the record. Maybe you don't like the person. There's other, other issues that could be arising that have caused you to decide that you, you don't want the project, or you do want that project for some reason. So thinking about different biases, you have a personal interest in the outcome, that would be like a financial interest. You have a strong bias in favor or against an applicant. The person had a campaign contribution. There's some stars to that, because there's some exceptions to that based off of running for office and when you have to disqualify yourself. If that's a situation that applies to you, we ask that you come to us and ask us specifically so we can apply the specific facts to the exceptions. Dual or incompatible office holding, so a planning commissioner cannot also simultaneously sit on the board of supervisors, obviously because you would be hearing things twice. Undisclosed or unalterable notions relating to the facts of a relevant decision. Maybe you've seen the house because you go to the river by that house every weekend, and you just think that person is not taking care of the property. That's not something that you could generally not disclose, or say it's unalterable if you've made your decision beforehand. And unfair advocacy by staff or outside agency members, that's normally if someone calls you. This is not if public constituents call you and say what their opinions are. They're generally allowed to do that. Our policy would be, or our preference would be that they, you ask them to write it down so that you can submit it, because it gets hard for ex parte disclosures on telephones or verbal communications. But outside agencies, CAL FIRE, I doubt any of these, CAL TRANS, any of those agencies would, but those would be the sorts of things. Or staff, which would be planning and building, public works, county council's office, things like that. If we start advocating in favor or against the project, we persuade you guys. So hitting on the idea of bias, bias occurs when there's an appearance that a decision maker has prejudged facts and is not open to changing their opinion. So moving into certain biases, ex parte is a type of bias. Ex parte means from one side only, and ex parte communication occurs when a decision maker receives information and evidence outside of a public hearing. When that happens, not everyone is apprised of the information, and because not all parties are aware, whether it be the public, or the applicant, or some other interested party, they don't have an opportunity to challenge what was said. Because they don't have the ability to challenge what was said, there's this idea that you've had this factual bias, and you've, you've made a judgment based off of information that they're not aware of. So again, context, planning commissioner, applicant public. This is just a court case. I underlined and bolded the relevant parts, which is nothing can be considered as evidence that was not introduced at the hearing, and of which the parties had noticed, at which they were present. And a hearing requires that a party be apprised of the evidence against him, so that he may have an opportunity to refute, test, or explain it. So this is the idea also that you can't surprise certain individuals. So like our policy is, is if you do receive not only ex parte communication, but maybe you receive an ex parte document that is complex and would take more than the 10 minutes that the applicant has at the stand for people to digest, you would need to submit that way, way earlier than, than the hearing, maybe as soon as you get it to the planning department, so that the planning department can review it, so that fellow commissioners can review it, so that the applicant can review it. Holding on to that until the moment of the hearing would be too late. So again, ex parte communication is kind of a sliding scale. Is it a site visit where you just go and look, which is also considered a form of communication, which is something you can disclose at the beginning of a hearing, or is it a lengthy document that has information that probably needs technical analysis? The more technical and convoluted ex parte communication is, the earlier you need to disclose that you are aware of that information. So going into what is ex parte communication, so it's oral, written, or sensory information. I kind of just hit on that with the site visits. Ex parte communication, I think a lot of people think of communication in forms of something written or orally, verbally presented. But what you see visually or auditory at a site visit could also be used, whether it's, I heard the generator going, or I saw shade cast over on this side, or the, the intersection didn't look that busy to me. Things like that are all really relevant for disclosure, because you're disclosing to your commissioners what sort of information and facts that you have that maybe they do not have, that you're making your decision based off of. What is not ex parte communication? Non-substantive communications. We think of these as like opinion-based communications. So if maybe a certain advocacy group is in support of a project, or certain parts of a project, and they have taken opinions as to what they like or dislike about the project, that would not be an ex parte communication. That would be, because there's not any additional information that maybe the commissioner has not known that's not in the record. If in the expression of that information, they disclosed new information that was not known, that would need to be disclosed. But otherwise, what their opinion is, you can state that they gave you their opinion, and that you asked them to write it down and submit it for the rest of the planning commission's consideration. So this is the idea of curing ex parte communications. The principle in law is that all ex parte communications are bad. So you start with a presumption that they're not good, and so you always have to cure them, which is what we do at the beginning of every hearing, when we say, can you please disclose your ex parte communications? If you do so at that point, the disclosure can be true, it needs to be complete, detailed, and as early as in the process as reasonable. Like I said, that reasonableness is fluid based off the extent and complexity. But generally, they should be avoided, except for site visits, which I'll get to later. Oh, I guess I'll get to it now. So the Humboldt County Planning Commission rules on ex parte communications is that site visits are generally encouraged by individual commissioners. And so because they are encouraged, and we have a rule about that, please go visit and make site visits and make your observations. But when you come here, please disclose those personal observations. Like I said, it needs to be complete, thorough, detailed, sensory, visual, and auditory if you're making a decision based off of that information. If the applicant or member of the public or, are there during your site visit, you should definitely defer from making any judgment, or saying things like, oh, this looks good to me, or this is fine, or whatever. At this point, you need to just focus on taking in the information, and then you can disclose what the information you received at the hearing. Other types of ex parte communication, which is personal contacts, telephone calls, things like that relating to substantive issues, should really be refrained from. If you have a question, the best policy is to ask staff first, and if you can't get the information from them, the staff will generally go out and find the information. So that way, we don't have a situation where one commissioner knows something, or is talking to another decision maker outside agency, or a member of the public or applicant, and the other doesn't have. Another thing with ex parte communications is if you open yourself up to the applicant, you need to also be willing to open yourself up to the public, and vice versa. So if you open yourself up to the public for having communications in ex parte, then you need to be available to the applicant as well.
Can we, like Commissioner West has a question, and I think, did you have a question?
I just was hoping to talk a little bit about ex parte. Like, you've made it really clear with like adjudicative, like decisions. When we're talking about more legislative decisions, there isn't a component of ex parte, right? But it's, like, you don't have an applicant that you're necessarily considering in the process.
Yeah. I've seen this a couple times at the board level, but I'll, I'll frame it in terms of like the tiny house ordinance. You would say, I have a tiny house in Oregon, so I'm familiar with this concept, or something like that, that makes you more familiar with the piece of legislation, for whatever reason. Maybe you have a tiny house on the back of your property, or something like that, or, or you entered into contract with a tiny house, or perhaps it's a cannabis piece of legislation, and you have a permit for cannabis, something like that. Just disclosure of those sorts of things, generally, even though you don't have an applicant.
Thank you.
So what if you read newspaper articles on a subject, and is that ex parte? Does it say, well, I've read quite a bit of articles on tiny houses, or tiny, or windmills, or whatever? Do you have to disclose that?
Because it's legislative, like I said, the ex parte is a little bit lower. If you were a vendor, perhaps, you would need to disclose it, because then you have some sort of vested interest in it. But if you're just reading articles on it, you can say, I've read articles on it. But like I said, the, the due process and ex parte is not as, does not need to be as detailed for legislative acts as it needs to be for quasi-judicial.
The other one is people often email, you know, and I try not to get into it with them, because, I mean, they find our emails. I usually just say, well, thank you. I encourage you to attend the meeting and make your comments.
That's generally a good policy. If they presented you with new information that maybe you did not know, I would also forward that email to staff, for staff to review, and the rest of the commissioners to have.
So should we forward it to staff?
That's a good policy.
So the ones that I find, like, the project-specific contacts by emails and things like that, those are easy to just, they're in the record. So I think those are easier. The, when we're making policy decisions like short-term rentals or tiny houses, coffee shop chatter. So just because we're out in the public, and those policy matters are, you know, taking weeks, if not months, and they're in the paper, so people like to talk about them. Is that ex parte communication?
No. With legislative acts, you're supposed to be hearing the opinions of, of the community. That's, that's part of it. And you can say, like, I've heard the opinion of the community as to this. That's, that's part of being a legislator, which is why when you have legislative acts, ex parte and due process is, is a little bit lessened, because they know that that's your function as a legislative body member.
Thank you.
Well, since we've had a couple questions, I have one or two as well. One question that occurs to me, and I haven't done this very often, but there are times when I'm confused about something in the staff report, or there's something not there, and I, so I'll call the planner on that project, and just have a chat with them about it. Is that something I should disclose like I would in ex parte conversation?
It's a good policy to disclose it. You don't have to disclose it like an ex parte. With, if it was an ex parte, you would need to go into detail about the exact specifics of that phone conversation. With staff, you can basically say what it was overarching about, if it was based off of information in the record. If staff disclosed to you information that's not contained in the record, then you would need to go much into, into further detail about what was disclosed.
Right. And I think usually, whatever questions I had, probably then were covered in their presentation. I just was wanting to understand it ahead of time. So, and I guess the other question I have about this is, we, we, I appreciate you noting that site visits are encouraged, as long as we disclose them. And I've certainly done that when I visit a property, but I guess I realized, listening to you talk, I don't, I don't usually say that much about what I observed, or, you know, and I'm not, and I'm not, I certainly, if I heard something from the applicant, I would know to disclose that. But, you know, what I noticed about the amount of traffic, the shade, the whatever kind of things, I probably haven't really ever said much about that. And seems like you're saying we should say a little bit more about whatever we learned from the visit?
Generally, yes, but especially so if that's something that's coming into your judgment on your decision-making. So if you're voting in favor or against based off of this information, then it needs to be disclosed. A big problem that you run into if you don't do a thorough disclosure in the beginning is maybe this wasn't an issue that you had, but then another commissioner brought it up, and now you're saying, well, you know what? I saw a big pile of dirt mid-hearing. Now, the public comment's already happened, and now you've done a disclosure too late, and it's fuddled the whole hearing. And so, being thorough upfront helps you on the back end, because it could come into your decision-making process, even if you don't initially think it is.
All right. Thank you.
Building on that, and then your earlier comment about more technical ex parte disclosures would benefit from earlier notice to staff. So if, would it make sense if a site visit or something similar did result in some specific details that you wanted to comment on that might take a while to describe, or you feel like might have, be important for staff to be aware of? That, that's your position. Can we submit in writing to staff prior to the meeting?
You wouldn't take a position at a site visit, but if you were, you've, you've seen something that maybe you think will come into factor in your decision-making at the hearing, I would definitely apprise staff about that as soon as possible. What we've seen before is reach, other agency documents were exchanged with a, with a specific commissioner, or something like that. And then the other commissioners didn't have the benefit of technical information. That was a, in a very technical document. That was not part of the record that was provided to staff or the applicant. And so the applicant didn't have the ability to review a technical document per, made by a regulatory agency before the hearing. And at the hearing, there's no time to review it, to look at it, refute it. And so those ones that are super highly technical, maybe you go on a site visit, and the applicant hands you a document from CAL FIRE, saying, look, this is what CAL FIRE gave me. Staff doesn't know, the rest of the commissioners don't know. So if they, you are given that, then you need to give that to staff right away, so that we can make sure that it's part of the record, and the other commissioners, the public, the applicant, everyone's aware that that's now in the hands of a decision maker.
And to clarify, that's, it's, it would be, it's our responsibility to submit to staff, and then staff's responsibility to decide whether or not that information needs to be distributed to the rest of the commissioners or made public?
If it's already part of the record, they wouldn't distribute it again. But if it's not part of the record, it would be distributed, because at the point that you know it has to be distributed to the public and the rest of the commissioners.
Sorry, but that's, staff does that? So we submit to staff? Okay, great.
So I get that the threshold for general research for non-legislative actions is whether or not it influences your decision. What's the threshold for the quasi-judicial in terms of like general background research?
We don't encourage doing ex parte communications for quasi-judicial, which would include certain background research. And if you do do background research, all of that needs to be disclosed to staff, because the due process is much more heightened in those situations. And so if you're looking at certain blogs or things like that, and you're reading all of the comments, and you read comments that you now want to make comment on in the hearing, you would need to submit that to staff. It's much more heightened in that situation, because the applicant needs to have an opportunity to review those comments, review that news article, review whatever it is, and say, this isn't true, or for this reason, this is true, or my situation is an exception. And not giving the applicant that opportunity is a failure to provide due process.
I just want to clarify and add one thing in there. This has happened to me throughout. When we have projects before us quasi, quasi-judicial, it's the project and the ordinance, whatever that ordinance is, or the county code that we're making the decision on, not whether that person is someone you like or dislike, or anything about the person. And, and I know myself, I've kept any thought or knowing of, of people out of the decision-making process, because I've always felt, if you brought that in, then it's being biased, and you should not take part in the decision-making process. So that's, that's just one thing that I want to try to remind as well, like, hey, we have to stick with the project and not the person. So sometimes that gets muddy whenever there are blogs out there that have lots of things about people's character, but that's, it's just my take on it.
That's, that's true. If you have an unfair bias against a particular person, that, we would suggest recusal, because it's a conflict of interest. And appropriate findings can't be made on the basis of personality, or hearsay. Okay. Laura, I think we can pull up the slides again. I have a couple of examples about fair process concerns and intentiveness of the decision-makers. There's a couple of commissioners that have seen these examples before when I gave this presentation a couple of years ago, but there's some new ones. So example one is that planning commissioner A is not in attendance at the first Thursday of the month planning commission meeting. During that hearing, the attending commissioners opened a public hearing on a project and took in evidence. Evidence would include staff report, applicant testimony, public comments, of the such. The public hearing is then continued to the next meeting. Planning commissioner A will attend the next meeting, the next Thursday, or the first Thursday, depending on when it's continued to. Planning commissioner A sits for the remainder of the public hearing, makes comments, discusses the hearing facts with the fellow commissioner, and ultimately votes on the project. Can planning commissioner A have truly paid attention when planning commissioner A did not attend the first part of the public I think last time, Commissioner Mulder answered both of these.
I'm not answering them this time.
I'm going to answer, because I just, this is my situation on the tiny houses. It's the exact situation. I missed the first hearing. I watched the entire hea- I watched the entire hearing and I'm going to announce that at the next meeting. I will tell the public. Apologize I didn't make the first hearing, but it was recorded and I watched every minute of it, all the public comment, all the staff presentation. And I intend to be engaged in the second meeting as well.
That's right. You would also need to read all the public comments and information that's submitted at the first public hearing because if it changes at all, even slightly for the second public hearing, you should be apprised of that.
And that could occasionally involve things that were handed out at the dais that were not submitted electronically. So in that case, I would, I would hope that staff would make that available to anyone who missed it.
Staff's policy is that when something is received at the dais, which is, the procedure is to provide 10 copies just for anyone who may be listening out there, that that information gets uploaded. So if you look on the agenda on Granicus or Legistar after the hearing, those public comments are also able to be clicked into. In the second situation, Planning Commissioner B seems distracted during a meeting. Planning Commissioner B is texting excessively and using multiple devices during the presentation of evidence. Planning Commissioner B then decides in the middle of the hearing to go to the bathroom, grab a snack and to talk with a friend. By the time Planning Commissioner B returns, it's time to vote. Can Planning Commissioner B have truly paid attention when Planning Commissioner B was at the meeting but not actively observing and participating?
No.
No. Not only should Planning Commissioner B refrain from voting on the project, they should refrain from commenting on the project. This was a case where a planning, based on truce balance, a planning commissioner was texting excessively during a meeting and the court found that the use of devices was excessive and that the attention pain could not have occurred. We also advise against texting for ex parte reasons. People get confused whether or not you're texting about something personal, which is a failure to be attentive, or whether you're taking in additional information that you should not be.
I just want to note, I, for anyone who might be questioning, I actually do use my phone a fair amount up here and I use it for reviewing the materials instead of a computer. And I'm happy to do a different process if there's any concern with that, but I am not using my phone for texting or other such things.
I've used my phone as well for reviewing documents. I've, I've seen what you're doing. It's, there's times where you've, in the past years, where you can see like, someone may be taking on evidence because they're like phone and then notes and not paying attention to any, any of the crowd. I don't see that behavior with this commission and I'm pretty, if someone's, you know, texting you a family, like, "Hey, pick up this," or whatever, I don't think that you're tuning yourself out as long as you're engaged and listening. It's when you're, you know, not here for like a solid five, five to 15 minutes. I think it's when it's more of a danger.
I would also refrain from Googling though during a hearing. So if you're Googling new information that's not in the record, that would be a big ex parte issue because you're receiving additional information that's not available to other commissioners.
So what, what about at the recent item about the wedding venue? And I Googled what the decibel levels like equate to and, but then I said that I Googled it and shared it, so, but it was after ex parte, but it was during the, the hearing?
I would refrain from doing that. Googling is not your friend because you're setting then a decibel limit that maybe the applicant doesn't agree with. He had no ability to say something, maybe the public doesn't agree with it. If it's something that you're interested in looking up, I would try and do it beforehand. If you really want to Google it and look further into it because you don't understand a concept, you would move the commission to continue the project so that you can have further information gathering period. And then that information could then be disclosed to the rest of the commissioners.
Or you could ask staff, because that's what I've done. If I don't understand something, I ask you guys to clarify it.
You can ask staff questions beforehand. I don't think staff had documents on the decibel level at that point. So if the staff doesn't know, then the item does need to be continued. But there's, there's a chance they may know.
And if you ask that question publicly, then everyone has the same answer. And it could be that we need to postpone this, I don't know.
I, I just feel like time's sake, rather than postponing it, would the appropriate thing to have done would be to say that when staff are changing the language for the final permit, that we would direct them to research the decibel level and decide then?
That is another due process issue because now you're not providing notice to the applicant of what this set decibel level is going to be. They only have a 30-day appeal period and if staff doesn't have time to research and doesn't set the limit for 28 days, then they only have two days to appeal for whatever reason. So the decision isn't made at the dais, it's improperly deferred.
So then, can I ask why, when I did that, why didn't you cut me off and?
I told John to cut you off?
You, you can cut me off, like, it's okay.
You can also, it's, my experience is frankly, and just to try to hold the staff accountable and for the staff to do the work, so. And I think it's perfectly okay, in fact, it's our job. When we review the report, if there's something that we find is inadequate or we think hasn't been researched deeply enough or is, you have to put it back on staff to just give them a chance. But I, I've been known to call them up and say, "Hey, I don't think you've investigated the capacity of this water well well enough." And they can explain how they have or haven't, or do more work or whatever. And sometimes it's like, you might have to say, "I can't make a decision on this matter because I don't have adequate information related to the sound levels. What's an appropriate sound level or what's not?" You can, you can, we don't have to. You can, we can push it back and say, "We need more information. Bring it back next month." Those are okay.
If I could just add a bit of experience in there, I want to agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Sceglial. And it's my experience that when things are done too haphazardly at the dais, rarely is it a good decision that doesn't need to be modified at some later point. And so if you're not sure about something, while the time, while it may require more time, the time is better spent to make sure that it is discussed with the applicant, that if there's other stakeholders involved, there's the opportunity to discuss it with them so that when it comes back then before the commission, everybody already knows what the discussion is and has had a chance to, to think about it and weigh it. And, and so I, I wouldn't feel bad about that.
So in, in the hypothetical situation you just proposed, if I had said, "I don't know what these decibel limits equate to, therefore I'm not comfortable making a decision." Would the rest of the commission, if they felt comfortable with it, moved on and voted without me? Or if one of us isn't comfortable making a vote and choosing, but we're not choosing to abstain? What happens?
It depends if you're in the majority or not. If the majority feels like they can make a decision without the additional information, then you can vote on the project. It doesn't mean that it won't be appealed because it's happened before where the commission has made decisions that the findings maybe weren't fully supported with evidence in the record. That's why I emphasized at the beginning, the evidence in the record to support your finding should be substantial. So it depends on what the, the rest wants to do. So another question we get frequently is whether there should be a recusal or whether there should be an abstention and what the differences between those two actions are. These both fall under the umbrella of disqualification. So under disqualification, you have recusal and, and abstention. So recusal is a complete removal of oneself as a judge or policymaker in a particular matter. And this requires a full disclosure and the commissioner must leave the chambers and not have any form of participation, which includes facial expressions, which is why we request that you leave the chambers because facial can, as we said earlier with the definition of communication, it can be auditory and sensory, which includes these facial inspections in that decision. We saw this with Commissioner O'Neill. She, she worked on a project and she, she left the room. She, she did it properly. So abstention is a choice. So you would not participate, or you could participate in the hearing at that point, but you're deciding not to vote for some other reason that's not related to a conflict of interest or bias. So in that case, maybe you don't agree with the decision. Or maybe you agree with the decision but not a particular condition. We've seen that happen before. And then you would abstain from voting in the majority because you don't agree with, with the condition. But you do not use it if you feel like in some way you have a conflict. If you have a conflict or bias, you need to recuse early at the outset of the hearing.
When we abstain, do we need to say the reason that we are abstaining?
You don't usually for abstention, but for recusal, you absolutely have to.
So if you said that you could abstain because maybe you don't agree with the majority, what's the difference then between abstaining and like symbolically voting against it even though the majority is going to vote for it or vice versa?
It's a choice of a commissioner whether they, they want to do that or not. Maybe they also don't want to vote against it. I mean, I think Commissioner Mulder does this a couple of times. I've seen him do it where he doesn't agree with a condition specifically because he doesn't want to vote against the project. He thinks that the project should go forward. He just doesn't necessarily like the condition.
Yes, I've done that. This is, I don't know, this is a question I'm going to ask because there's a, there's a potential. What happens if a commissioner is an applicant? How, how does, how do they, does the applicant get their due process?
Wow, what a hard one. You would, you'd be allowed in the room. We would probably need to look into that question much further. So if you have an application coming before the commission, please give us plenty of fair time to research how to do that appropriately.
Sometime before the end of December, most likely.
Thank you for giving us notice.
I've, a question on, I've been recusing myself because of a conflict with GHD from time to time, because I was employed by them and had some income. I read somewhere that, that conflict is if you've had $500 of income within 12 months? Is that?
We're going to actually get into FPPC rules in more depth because that conflict is a financial conflict and there's very special rules around financial conflicts because of the Political Reform Act. So I will hit on that a little bit later.
I'm trying to time myself out of that conflict. Trying to figure out when it's gone, is what my question is. How do I figure out when it's gone?
Yeah, one more question about abstention. If, we understand that if there's been a previous hearing that was continued and you missed that and you come to the next one, you should have read all the documents, watched the videos, so you got all that information. If you were not able to do so for whatever reason, would abstention be appropriate? I mean, would you have to actually leave the dais during that item or?
Recusal's more appropriate in that situation because you're not apprised of all of the facts. And abstention means that you can participate and you could be influencing the commissioner's decisions around you based off of not the entire record before you.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense.
So just some ideas on the failure to afford due process and fair hearing principles is you can get an appeal. The appeal of decision to the planning commission can go to the board. If it's in the coastal zone, there's potential for it to go to the coastal commission. And then afterwards, even possibly the judiciary. This costs lots of money and time, not only to the applicant but to the county. And there can be an invalidation of the decision-maker's action, which puts it back before the commission. And normally in those situations, a lot of the commissioners have to recuse. We'd have to find standby commissioners. It's, it's really muddled because then there's an invalidation, but a loss of faith in decision-makers. We would have to find substitute decision-makers because you guys are then imperfect decision-makers because you made this invalid decision. It gets very, very complicated. So just try to avoid that. And so that's the end of due process. As I mentioned earlier, in terms of conflicts and in terms of findings and permits and things like that, we'll get a little bit more in depth. Is there any questions on due process before we move forward to the Brown Act?
I have, I have one regarding disclosure. So for example, I recently went to a public workshop on the tiny house. And would it be appropriate to submit impressions in writing? I guess, if I have a number of sort of impressions or, you know, summarizing what I heard, would it be appropriate to submit in writing or should it? Or does it sort of, is it up to me to decide if it's lengthy and I should do that versus describing it up here?
Impressions, no. You should not be making any inalterable impression beforehand or signaling to the commissioners beforehand if you have an impression. You can get a Brown Act that way. If maybe you, you did write, "This is what I think," and then you post it and then now it's a public comment or it's in part of the record. But if it's a factual information, if it's a summary and it doesn't include opinions, then yes, you can do that.
If I could, I would recommend though that you wait until the staff report is done and see if the staff has adequately grasped what you observed. Because that really is presenting to the entire commission, you know, what happened there and, and what the takeaways from that are. And so that really is the, you know, the primary venue. And then if that's not correctly stated, certainly you're free to provide that additional information.
So thinking a little bit about media interviews, we had an inquiry from a media outlet regarding the tiny homes and whether or not we wanted to be interviewed about it prior to the public hearing. And at the time, I was like, "I'm going to decline because I don't want to accidentally say an opinion." But there were questions about how this will impact the community. And I was like, "I wonder if there is even a way to talk about the item without conveying predisposed opinions and impressions." So like in that instance, when they asked about like, "How do you think this will impact the community?" Saying how you think it'll impact the community would be a pretty hinky gray area?
It wouldn't be a gray area. That could be used as evidence that you are not a fair decision-maker. Again, though, I want to, I want to caveat with the legislation piece, it's a little bit less due process and so people want to know your opinion. It's better to say it on the dais than out in the public, especially if the other commissioners don't have the ability to refute you or talk about you. Legislative action is usually between the commissioners and the public. You don't have the applicant, so then it becomes more two-partied. But it's very tricky, yes.
Well, good question. Can I follow up on that? Because, yeah, it, it, it comes up with other, it's pretty rare to have it happen with a quasi judicial hearing. I guess it could for something really big. But, but is there a way, is there any like okay way to participate in some sort of a public interview or forum discussing an ordinance or something like that, a quasi legislative project? I mean, even if you were saying, "Well, you know, I'm keeping an open mind and I'm, I have questions about this and I have questions about that." I mean, even if you're kind of just trying to say what you're, what you're curious to find out rather than what my opinion is, do you think that's just not advisable?
I think in those situations, it's fine. I think in those situations, it's fine. As I kind of explained with the coffee chatter earlier, that is your guys' purpose for legislative acts, which is different than quasi judicial on a particular project. So you should be out in the public. You should be with the community garnering their opinion. You should be saying, this is, you know, what I'm curious about or what I'm looking into because the public isn't going to provide input based off of that. That input that you receive back should hopefully be disclosed to the commissioners, especially if it's going to be a basis of your decision. If it's written to you, it should be forwarded to staff, things like that. But that's part of your role, which again is why the due process and the ex parte is lessened a little bit for legislative acts.
Right, okay, thanks.
But to be clear, if you were out there in the community and say, there's absolutely no way I'm voting for this ordinance in favor of it, that would be very bad.
So I just wanted to add in on that that I hear everything you're saying and I agree with it, though it's really more when you get into the real nuts and bolts or like really descriptive things like a tiny house should only be, you know, throw out a hypothetical, if it's smaller than 1,000 square feet, it shouldn't be a tiny home. You know, I'm just throwing out something that's totally off the wall. But if, when you start putting numbers or that kind of descriptions, that's where I've found that it can lead to being potential bias later on because you're putting that out there and then someone takes that and runs with it. And next thing you know, there's a story out there on a blog that all of a sudden this is what the ordinance is going to be and it discourages people from participating in the public process because they think the decision is already made.
I would agree with that. You don't want to put out unalterable notions, so maybe it's not limited to the ordinance as a whole, but more specific things within the ordinance. So maybe you're curious about what the size of a tiny house should be and what the limit should be, but you're not going to say 1,000 feet or I'm not voting in favor, something like that. Through the chair, I'm actually going to ask for a break because I'm seeing that Director Ford has an old slide deck of mine and I need to give him a new slide deck.
So do we do like a 10-minute break right now?
It might have been just under 10 minutes, but we're coming back. Everyone's here, everyone's present and we'll get to the Brown Act.
So where due process is a common law principle, which is a principle that's found in case law, we have the Brown Act, which is a codified principle. And some of these due process principles are going to be a little bit redundant when we start talking about FPPC and Brown Act because they've codified some of these due process principles into the act itself. So the Ralph Brown, M. Brown Act, the people's business, this act was passed in 1953. It ensures that the local governmental bodies conduct the people's business openly. So put plainly, it is a transparency law that the people and the public know what is So going to the Brown Act's purposes, it wants to maximize public access to the deliberative process. That means deliberation should happen before the board. It wants to prohibit communications about agency matters among the majority of the board except at public notice meetings, requires the posting of agendas for all meetings with clear agenda descriptions, and it encourages public input at meetings. I want to put some asterisks on some of these, especially the deliberation and the majority. We're going to get further detail about serial meetings and things like that later. Things that commonly occur though is if we take breaks or things like that, at that point when we take a break, you need to stop discussing an item. No questions even posed to other commissioners. If you have a question to staff, that's acceptable because at that point you wouldn't be deliberating in front of the public because not everyone has access to that. Personal matters and chit chat is fine, but not about what's before the board itself or the commission itself. And then we'll get into serial meetings a little bit further. So the Brown Act covers legislative bodies and local agencies, which includes any board or commission or committee of the local agency, which is created by a formal action of the legislative body. The Board of Supervisors is Humboldt County's legislative body. The Planning Commission is an appointed body and an advisory commission established, formally established by the board. Therefore, under the Brown Act, the commission is a legislative body.
Talk about it during the break. What if after the vote, can we talk about it then?
To other commissioners? Yeah, that's fine. There's issues with talking after the vote to maybe board members, things like that. You can unduly influence their decision on appeal, so you should not be talking to board members.
Like supervisors or each other?
Supervisors.
Because they could do appeals.
Because they will take the appeal and you don't want to be unduly influenced. There's a case I'm thinking of, I think it was Natasha is the name of the case. There was a commissioner who really didn't want a gas station at the end of a road and they voted for it or against it. And then they anonymously posted some letters about it and then they spoke to the board member about voting against it as well behind closed doors and that's not permitted. In fact, if you guys vote on an item at the commission, you shouldn't make public comment at the board level about it. Other matters you can that weren't touched on by the commission, but going to the commission and unduly influencing them can be an issue. So what is a meeting? Any congregation of a majority of the members of the legislative body to hear, discuss or deliberate upon at some time and location, which includes teleconference locations, any item that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. And a hearing can occur even if no action is taken. Majority for the commission is four. There's a couple of meeting exceptions, which is individual contacts, so discussing with constituents. A majority of members may attend social or ceremonial events, conferences or community forums. So as Commissioner Kuriazi mentioned, and I think Commissioner Levy, that there was a town hall that was attended for the tiny house village, that's acceptable attending that. Talking with each other maybe about what you're doing is not though, or thinking. So as I was mentioning, if you attend only as an observer. So we're going to get into the concept of serial meetings because as I said, I mentioned that only two is necessary to start causing Brown Act issues. And this is through the concept of what's called a serial meeting. So there's two situations for a serial meeting, which is a daisy chain meeting, which is where member A contacts member B, then member B contacts member C, and so on and so forth until member C contacts member D and now you're at a majority, you're at a quorum. And so you guys as a commission will have met as a majority to discuss a topic beforehand. The other one is a hub and spoke serial meeting. There's a couple of situations when this can happen. It can either be a member, the chair, staff acting as the hub and that one person is reaching out to other people and now the other members of the commission that have been contacted now know information from others. So you shouldn't not ever, as a, as a just general rule, don't communicate your thoughts to other commissioners because you may not know that when you contact member B, that member B is going to contact member C. You just don't have that information or ability to, it's being speculative to hope that they don't. So the general rule is don't put your thoughts out there. And so you shouldn't solicit response from other members when you forward information in emails. So the big thing for this is forwarding and replying all because as other commissioners have mentioned, sometimes just forwarding kind of shows your opinion as to a matter. And so then you guys are deliberating something beforehand that you shouldn't be. Forward it to staff, staff will then present it to you and a whole, and the staff won't say, we received this from Commissioner Levy. They'll just put it in the record so that the entire body knows what the information So as technology has progressed, running into serial meetings have become more complicated. So the first FOPA is a social media FOPA. This is social media as well as blogs. So discussing amongst yourselves, like I said, can mean any communication, facial expressions, things like that, including the use of digital icons to express reactions. So if you're on Facebook and you see another commissioner's posting on something and you heart it or, and it's within your jurisdiction. If it's a personal thing, you're hearting a family photo, that's fine. But if it's within your jurisdiction, you're posting something, you heart it or you dislike it, you are then communicating your thoughts on a project and that's an issue. Same with maybe Lost Coast Outposts or Red-Headed Black Belt, things like that. If you're posting or if you're responding even anonymously, the court has said even anonymously, that is an issue. Another situation is staff communications. We take great strides in making sure that we're not committing Brown Act violations, but if a staff member comes up to you and starts saying, this is what Commissioner so-and-so thinks about the project, you should ask them to stop and refrain from continuing to give the other commissioners' opinions as to a project. But hopefully that doesn't happen.
So when we've had applicants invite us all out to discuss a topic or view a property that is a part of an application, if less than the majority of us participate, is that not a violation of the Brown Act? I guess like where, how do we, or do we all just need to be very careful and not only individually participate?
You need to be very careful in those situations because if four or more of you show up to a site visit, that is now a public meeting and the entire public should have been invited, which means that we should have noticed it in a newspaper and circulated it that there is a public meeting at a certain property. So yes, you need to take great precautions in ensuring that you don't accidentally cause there to be a public, an unattended public hearing.
So just to be clear, if we're having, if we're talking about a, let's just say the tiny house, you know, workshop, which is publicly noticed and it's a quasi legislative matter also, and if four of us were to show up, I think we all know better than to like express opinions, but if we were there taking it in, that's okay, right?
You can observe, not participate in those situations because it is publicly noticed, you're intended to be there. The other exceptions are conferences, certain social or ceremonial events, so like cutting of the ribbons of the McKay Forest or something like that, four commissioners could go to that, observe and not sort of make any comments about those sorts of things.
Right, right.
But you, and you can talk to each other, just not about what's before you. You can say, oh, I saw your son at a football game.
Right, right, right. But I mean, I'm just thinking then about the fact that it's not, it's not maybe so much of a, well, if we would have gotten information at that hearing that is probably above and beyond what the summary of it might present to the others. I mean, I'm just sort of thinking about that. Like is that, it's not so much about us influencing each other because we haven't said anything to each other, but it could be that the four who attended that workshop know stuff that might influence their judgment that the others didn't get. So I'm just sort of wondering what we do about that.
I would disclose that I went to the public hearing because it is public notice. Everyone has the right to attend and so there's not really an issue at that point.
Well, they had the right to, but they didn't and so.
You would disclose, you would see what was in the staff report. If there's something that's really changing your judgment or opinion that wasn't in the staff report, you can either contact staff before and say, I would like this in the staff report, or at the hearing beforehand, before everything gets started, which includes public comment, you would say, I'm thinking about this that I heard at the town hall.
Right.
And you would disclose it then.
And come to think of it, my question really doesn't matter actually if it's four or two, you know, however many it was, they got information above and beyond what might have been presented otherwise. So yeah, okay.
Can add in a little bit, I think more with the site visits that I want to make sure we don't miss this is there is a large project in the outskirts of Arcata and I think staff helped facilitate that to make sure, I think they kept us down to only two at a time, just to make sure we stayed far, far away from a potential quorum. But I mean, that's I think was the beginning, as there may be hopefully bigger projects coming to Humboldt County one day, that may come up again. So I think that's what's.
Staff is here to help facilitate interactions, make sure you don't violate. Another thing we could do is have a public meeting at the site if we wanted all of the commissioners to attend. We would then have to invite the rest of the public and those sorts of decisions can be made at a staff level or if the commission so wanted and the applicant was receptive, things like that. So moving on to, as poignant, location requirements. So the Brown Act requires that all regular and special meetings of a legislative body be held within the territorial boundary of the local agency's jurisdiction. There's a couple of exceptions to that. Teleconference meetings are now very popular and are permitted under the Brown Act in certain situations. The most current piece of legislation on this is AB 2449. Obviously, we saw a lot of change of this with COVID. This is a lot of text and I apologize for this. These are some of the COVID changes that were made to teleconference meetings, which allow for the hybrid meeting and commissioners' remote participation. So as I mentioned earlier, the Brown Act requires that all deliberation happen open and publicly. There are certain situations where a decision maker can discuss their need to participate remotely. Those would be just cause and another situation would be an emergency circumstance. So in the just cause situation, a general description of the circumstance could be provided to staff or to the commission and you could use that for up to two meetings per year. I'm going to define just cause and emergency circumstance in the next slide. Emergency circumstance is a little bit, and there needs to be no vote. You get an automatic two per calendar year for just cause. For emergency circumstances, you can have as many as you want. You have to provide a 20-word description and then the planning commissioners have to vote whether or not to excuse you and allow you to have a remote participation. So the 20 words, it's kind of hard because emergency circumstance, a lot of it is related to medical, but you don't need to actually disclose your medical situation. Certain things are obviously confidential and protected. And then if you do participate remotely, you would need to disclose if there's anyone in the room that's over 18 years old, who they are, their relationship to you, things like that, whether they're listening in. And then you also need to participate audio and visual, so you could not go off camera. So emergency circumstance, these are the ones that you get two per year. It's just a physical or medical emergency that prevents a member from attending. Just cause is a little bit more defined. That extends to caregiving of a child, parent, grandparent, grandchild, siblings, spouse, domestic partner. There are, there is some definitions to those terms that may be like a stepchild or certain in-laws, things like that. If you have a question, if it's not necessarily someone that's directly related but could fall under one of these categories, you just ask us and we can make sure that we review it. it and make sure that you're covered. If you have a contagious illness, if there is a physical or mental disability, and then travel while on official business of the legislative body, or another state or local agency.
So I just want to kind of flag that, what that means is that unless you happen to, I guess, work for another public agency, traveling because of work, being out of town, or because of a personal reason, that's, that's never going to be a just cause.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Moving into agenda requirements. A legislative body cannot take an action on an item appearing, not appearing on the posted agenda. There are some very specific exceptions. We see these when, with staff report from planners. If you're asking staff to bring something back maybe for consideration at a later point, and you guys all move and make a motion to bring it back, things like that. If there's some sort of emergency, providing references, things like that can be exceptions to the rule. But as a general matter, you cannot take action on something that's not posted on the agenda. Agenda notice and posting, these are really done by staff, but it's good for you guys to know anyway. It needs to be noticed and accessible to the public 24 hours a day. Hours is online as well as posted physically. They need to be posted in advance of the meeting, so it would be 72 hours in advance of a regular session, which can include weekends, and 24 hours in advance of a special session. It has to include the site of the meeting, including any teleconference locations. I should clarify, if you are allowed remote participation, you don't have to provide, for just cause or emergency circumstance, you wouldn't have to provide the exact location on that. Again, if you're going to use one of those circumstances, we would ask that you talk to us first, so we can tell you how to appropriately navigate that situation in advance. Obviously, with the emergency circumstance, you may not have that much foreknowledge, but in as much advanced knowledge as you can. Agendas must also be mailed to people who request notice. We also have certain code requirements, that if there's certain people within certain distances, that we mail notices to them as well. And the agendas must include a brief description of each item of business to be discussed, and recent case law, I believe it was last year, we now have to include in agendas any proposed sequel action as well. So public attendance, observation, participation, and input. Every agenda for a regular meeting needs to provide an opportunity for public comment on items within the board's jurisdiction. So the opportunity for public comment at a regular meeting needs to include both comments on items that are posted on the agenda, as well as non-agenda items, which we usually, we do. Just as a caveat, if there is someone that needs a translator, that person needs to be provided twice the amount of public comment time. So instead of, if we only give them three minutes, they would need to be given six minutes. There's also caveat to that, that if we had like a fancy transcription automatic machine, we wouldn't have to do that, but we don't have that. The board cannot prohibit public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, acts, omissions of the body. The chair, as I'll get into later, has certain duties. If some, there's a presentation of harm or immediately body threat, and there's some sort of disruptions. And then any person attending a meeting has a right to record as well. And occasionally, we'll get media in here that records. So unless the commission votes in favor of finding it disruptive, maybe they want to be in the middle and have a bright light or something that might be disruptive. But unless that sort of finding can be made, it's required that it be allowed.
I just want to clarify, from trainings I've done over the Brown Act, when people are making public comment, and they're kind of getting into a point that they may be, they could possibly be held liable. They're free to speak whatever they want, but they could potentially be held liable if they're trying to, I can't think of the term, but go after someone's character, but not in a, I can't think of the name right now, I'm drawing a blank, but is that still something here that, that can be utilized? I haven't seen it happen, there was only one time where we had someone call up and call us derogatory terms, the chair muted them, and you know, that was an instance, but I'm talking more like, I'm going to try to think of the name.
Are you thinking of like maybe defamation?
Defamation of character, yes.
Generally, we would want to see more than that, because there is another outlet, which is the private courts, to resolve those issues, unless they're being disruptive. And the chair does have the ability to calm disruptive people down, which is basically saying, "Those are opinions, those could be defamatory. We ask that you refrain yourself, change the subject matter," things like that, to control the situation. You can even put people outside of the room, depending on the level of disruptiveness. So that's, that scale of disruptiveness is not something that's super-defined. There's, there's some opinion to it, but general comments here and there that are opinion comments, that doesn't give us the right to automatically shut it down.
I'm not necessarily saying shut them down, but just remind them, you're free to speak, freedom of speech, but you can be held liable, liable for things that you do say.
That's within the chair's discretion.
Okay, just want to clarify, thank you.
Would, I guess, hate speech be kind of flying under that same, would that be under that same umbrella? Because I feel like there have been times, not in this particular body, but watching other public meetings, where a public commenter is very much gone into that realm.
So we have policies on speech, with hate speech, it's going to rise to a level of whether or not there's imminent harm, or there's some sort of risk associated with the speech, or is it super-disruptive? Certain hate speech, because of the nature, is generally pretty emotionally evoking, but it can also cause uproar in the crowd, and because of the possibility to incite some sort of harm, or agitation, or negative reaction, those would be the reasons that we would curtail it. Hate speech itself is not a reason, but it's the sort of, the disruptiveness or the harm that could flow from, from that sort of speech.
If I may, also, and what about somebody's comments, which are just totally irrelevant to the subject that we're hearing about or deciding? Like, I mean, if somebody just goes off on a rant that has nothing to do with the project, the legislation, or our jurisdiction at all, and they're just going off, is that something that the chair has to let them? No, you can cut them off.
No, the chair has the ability to cut them off if it's not within the jurisdiction of the planning commission, if it's an off-agenda item, if it's an on-agenda item, if it's not about the project before you, or the legislation before you, even if it's within your jurisdiction, the chair still has the ability to tell them to stop commenting.
Okay, just making sure.
Just to clarify, anything outside of Humboldt County is not within our subject jurisdiction, from my understanding.
Yeah.
So moving on to violations of the Brown Act, there's two types of violations. There's the civil liability against the government body, which would be where someone sues Humboldt County. Those can be done through an injunction, a writ of mandamus, declaratory relief. Generally, a court will declare an action void, and then ask that it be cured through some sort of ratification process. The other one is if a member kind of goes out of their way to commit a violation of a Brown Act, and that can result in some criminal liability. It's a misdemeanor. So if they act with a wrongful intent to deprive the public of information, and I do believe that there's fines and also possible jail time associated with that. It's not long, though. Well, 90 days is long enough. And then we're moving on to the next subject. And does anyone have any questions about the Brown Act before we move on to the Public Records Act?
I don't know if it's about the Brown Act specifically, and maybe you get into it later, but when you were talking about liability, I would love to know more about our personal liability versus like the county's liability when it comes to our decision-making. I've seen other, I don't know if I've ever seen it, I've seen it on nonprofit boards, where someone has been personally sued for decision-making processes, and I'm curious what our liability is in that, but that's maybe a different day's discussion.
Generally, with, with personal liability for a situation, it's going to be if you deprive someone of the due process, if there's a Brown Act violation, if there's bias, and there's, in legal terms, what's called a mens rea requirement usually associated with those. Mens rea means that there's some sort of intent associated, so you acted, maybe not negligently, but you acted willfully, maliciously, some sort of higher threshold than just like, oops, I didn't mean to do that, but more of like an intent to deprive someone. But you, I also want to be clear that you guys, any commissioner, any staff member can be sued, no matter what. It doesn't mean that that's going to be upheld in court. But you put yourself out there.
Just maybe a question around email communication. So we do frequently get emails from the public commenting on an item that might be appearing before, before the commission. Often, most of the time, they're copied to all the commissioners, they email all the commissioners, and hopefully staff, too. I don't, I never know, like, am I supposed to acknowledge those, not acknowledge those? You know, some people I know send back, "Thank you for your comment." I, I'd like the staff would acknowledge them and be copied, so I know that the staff acknowledged, "Thank you," it's in the public record or whatever, so that I don't have to respond. I guess I feel like not responding might put off the person that sent the note, thinking I'm not paying attention, that I didn't get it, or didn't read it. But responding might draw me into an email conversation that I don't really want to have, so I never know what to do.
The first rule is don't hit "reply all," even if it's a communication by staff to all of the commissioners. Don't hit "reply all." Reply individually if you reply at all. The situation where you get into a conversation with that person that's emailing you in a back-and-forth, it would be an ex parte communication. And then it would, you would have to forward the communication to staff, who would then need to upload it for the rest of the commissioners to review. As a, as a policy, as I stated earlier, it's, you shouldn't reply all. You shouldn't reply at all. Ex parte communication is frowned upon, except for site visits. So you don't even really need to acknowledge it, just make sure that staff has it, and it's in the public record.
So to be clear, you're saying it's better to not even say "thank you," not to say anything at all?
I know it may seem harsh to them, but the, the risk of, of going down a rabbit hole of ex parte communication, or violating a due process for an applicant, or something like that, because you've been wrapped up in this conversation, or committing a Brown Act violation, because now the commissioners are all on a reply. The risk is much higher than maybe a person not knowing whether or not you, you read their, their comment, especially if it's placed in the public record, which, as we stated earlier, if you do receive an email, forward it to staff, if staff has not already CC'd, so that it can be placed in the public record.
Then why do we have to have our emails as a public, out to the public?
Can you repeat your question?
Then why is our emails public information?
It's okay for the constituents to send you emails and send you information and opinions on a project. They should, they should be doing that. You shouldn't be communicating back and forth with them, and as I mentioned earlier, forward it to staff, so that the other commissioners have access to that information.
Just like to offer that a lot of times, I have information, email exchanges forwarded to me, where staff was not copied on emails that are sent to either commissioners or board members. So if you don't see us copied down there someplace, it would be beneficial to forward that to us.
We're now moving into the Public Records Act. So this is the people's right of access to information concerning the conduct of the people's business. Therefore, the meetings, everything should be open to public scrutiny. Public records are broadly construed. When restricting access, or deciding when to restrict access, basically, this is another transparency law, in which we're, the legislation, legislators have decided that the people should have access to most information. There's some caveats for confidential information. You'll see that from time to time, maybe AB 52 consultations, HIPAA, things like that. I can, I can list some in a later slide. That should not be disclosed to the public, and that we wouldn't disclose as a PRA request ourselves. PRA requests are sent in to staff through a system. We can also accept it via email. There's some, some, some fun law on that, so if people request information of staff in email, then even if it's not sent in through our PRA system, we, we construe it as a Public Records Act request. So moving into what is a writing? This is handwriting, typewriting, printing, photo-stating, photography, photocopying, any transmittal by email, fax, any sort of tangible form of communication, letters, words, pictures, sounds, symbols, in which something has been stored. So writing isn't just a writing. This is being recorded right now. This would be a writing under the Act. How does this pertain to you guys, is your personal devices and accounts? So commissioners don't have a county email. Some commissioners have formed emails specifically for their commissioner duties, which could be advisable, because a writing prepared by a public employee or an official in conducting agency business is subject to the Public Records Act, even if the writing is prepared using a personal account. This is also true of text messaging and things of that sort. And determining whether or not something is, within the agency business, courts look at the content, the context and purpose, the audience and the scope. So incidental mentions of the agency business would not constitute a public record. So the example in this is maybe an email to a spouse saying, "My coworker is an idiot." That's the court's words. Is not likely a public record, but an email to a superior reporting a coworker's mismanagement might be. And your guys' situation, maybe texting your spouse, saying, "I'm on the way to the commission hearing," is probably not agency business, but if you start texting your opinions about the hearing, "We're going to hear this, this matter and this matter, and I did a site visit on this day, and I'm not sure what to think about it," that probably is. So this also requires a reasonable search for public records and personal accounts or devices, and the courts are the ones that gets to determine the reasonableness of the search. There's liability if we fail to produce public records, which should have been produced, and the requser can file a lawsuit against the county seeking a court order to force the production. What we've seen with this before, especially if you're using personal devices, is we, or the court will subpoena your personal device to retrieve the information off of it, and then you will no longer have access to your device as that information is being downloaded. Again, there is certain court fees and recovery for attorney, attorney fees. So moving on to intentional spoliation and deletion of public records, these records need to be kept for at least two years, which is pretty hard if you're texting, or if you're emailing. emailing and you're not saving these informations. The best thing to do is if you cannot store the information for this long, is to forward it to staff, because we have a whole cloud-based system that stores our records, so that we don't intentionally spoil or delete our public records. So as a rule of thumb, oh, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt your flow. Am I remembering right that our handwritten notes are also public record?
That's correct.
Okay. If we are, if we're drafting something and it's not, and it's like called a draft, is that also public record?
No.
Okay.
Certain internal drafts are not public records. There are definitely exceptions to the public records. If you're confused whether something is subject to the Public Records Act, you can ask us. It's easier just to forward most of the things. Certain impressions of commissioners, things like that are not going to be public record, especially if it's internal to you and you're not sharing it publicly. The second, you take a draft and you give it to someone that's not staff, or you give it to some sort of outside agency, or someone that's not within our organization, it is no longer considered a draft that's protected. It is considered public record at that point, because you made it public to one person, you make it public to all. So just as a general policy, we ask that you guys limit those sources in which electronic writings may be stored. So going back to some of these more difficult places, Lost Coast Outpost, Facebook, things like that, if you're starting to make comments on things within your jurisdiction, that is a public record. Then you would need to store it, then you would need to give it to staff. That's, it can get really convoluted, same with cell phones and text messages. I think text messages can be deleted after a year on certain servers, so if you're not holding on to them properly, we can run into issues there. Creating a specific email for communications and directing people and constituents to that email is probably a good policy, and then making sure staff has that information just in case we get a PRA. Because part of the issue, too, is we don't know whether or not we've given the entire record in a PRA request, if we don't know what the commissioners have.
So in the event of a Public Records Act request regarding something in our jurisdiction, does staff then reach out and ask us for records relating to that? Or is it assumed that we turn over all records regularly so that you don't have to ask for that?
The better policy is to turn them over if they're within your jurisdiction, but we have definitely reached out to legislative members. We've also gotten very specific requests, saying, I want Commissioner A.'s email information.
Okay.
Or, I saw Commissioner B. texting during my hearing. I would like a PRA about the texts that were sent. And then, again, if you're emailing your spouse saying, be home at 8:30, that's not within the jurisdiction, but then if you are texting about within the jurisdiction, that would need to get disclosed.
So keep our notes, but don't, like, that's one of the things where it's like, I don't make staff wants all of my notes all of the time, but just like, keep them in case it comes up?
If it's a draft or an impression, it's probably not going to come up, but I would keep it.
Yeah, I mean, I've been subject to a number of PRA requests in my time. I never thought that I should be submitting everything that I write about anything to you in the absence of that, though. I mean, keeping it, yeah, but...
Unless you made it available to a member of the public. Once you made, if you wrote it and then you made it available to a member of the public, then it's available to all. It's no longer a draft, it's no longer an impression.
Right, right, right.
It's a public record. But yeah, you could just keep it, so if we do get a PRA, in the event of a PRA, we can look at it, analyze whether it falls under a PRA exception, which drafts, like I said, impressions usually do. But the second that you make it public, then those exceptions don't even apply, so there's no analysis that needs to be done, so...
Sure, okay. And yeah, there was one time, early in my time up here, when they, I was even asked for like, notes in the hearing, so, yeah.
So, there's many a times when I was just packet thing, I would scratch notes with the projects, but then I filed those in the trashcan when I was done, because they were scratch notes. Since taking this over, I was recommended by Commissioner Levy to do like a notebook and kind of keep notes that way, and I've been attempting to follow everything online, but I just make myself scratch notes. Are you saying you want copies of those scratch notes?
I would keep the scratch notes in case, as Commissioner Levy said, someone's asking for your notes. Then, when we do it, it's, in, in, in legal jargon, we have to make a detailed index of everything we have, even if that index is exceptions. So we would say, we do have notes by Commissioner Mulder, it's subject to this exception.
Okay.
And that's why it doesn't need to be produced. It's like a ledger of what's produced. But you don't have to automatically give it to us unless we get a PRA on it.
Okay. And then sometimes you may not have notes for a specific thing because it was all here, whatever it was. Okay. So we don't have to save post-its or anything like that? I see there's like post-its around here that people use.
You don't want my drawings?
Is your drawing within the jurisdiction of the planning commission?
I draw pictures of all you.
Of every applicant who comes before us.
Same question, but on comments on PDFs. So that is often how I'll make my notes, will be on the PDFs.
I would save those documents so that we can analyze them in case there is an exception. And you can send it, like I said, to staff, and it's still protected, it's still an internal draft document, an internal sort of decision, but the second it goes public, we may not be able to use that exception. And I'm not saying that this is a failsafe for all things. These sorts of exceptions usually get quite convoluted as the case law progresses. And as I mentioned earlier, the Public Records Act has a tendency to be more transparent than less transparent, and so the trend is that more information and more documents that you can give the public, that's what the court wants.
Just don't take notes.
So just, I want to distinguish some things because we throw around the word "record" a lot up here, and so there's different types of records, and I want us to be kind of aware and kind of thinking of that. The first one is a public record, or the second one, actually, I guess, I started on this side since we're in the Public Records Act. And that's everything that we have as a government body, that's everything. Anything, not only that we have, but maybe our agents have, which would be, you guys are agents of the, of the commission, if we have outside consultants, if they have information, things like that. It's, it's everything we have or can reasonably get. It's a vast, vast collection of documents that are within our actual or constructive possession, and so that's a public record. And then the second is the record of proceedings. And that's what you guys have when you make a decision on a project, and we're talking about the record on a project. That's much more defined to the project. Usually includes the information, evidence, audiovisual documentation that's submitted as part of the administrative record to make a decision. So findings and things like that usually need to be supported with project-specific determinations. So if we're throwing around the word "record," just try and be mindful of what type of record we're talking about. Generally, administrative record, record of proceedings, sometimes a public record.
I have a question, because sometimes when we make a decision, some might have been asked, well, why did you vote against that? Or, I know you've clarified some of our decisions, so we have a good reason to back it up, because is that important to have justification for why you didn't approve something?
I'm going to get a little bit more detailed about permit findings and certain situations, a sequoia resolution findings, things like that, a little bit later. I will say, in that context, if you're asking and just putting it like on the record through the cameras, that's just a public record. If you want to make an actual finding, that needs to be voted on before, with the rest of the commissioners, and that's how it gets put into the administrative record. Before, if you're just asking out loud, that's not technically part of the administrative record. And that's the end of the Public Records Act. I'm moving on to the Political Reform Act we have in the Fair Political Practices Commission. Does anyone have any questions before we move on to that? So the Political Reform Act was passed, and it basically set, stated that a public official at any level of state or local government shall not make, participate in making or in any way attempt to use a public official's position to influence a governmental decision in which the official knows or has reason to know that there is a financial interest. Generally, this extends to the interests of spouses and dependent children. I'm going to get way more detailed into this, I don't think this is the only slide. I'll go way into what a financial interest is or could be. This is just an, the concept that there is the Political Reform Act. When the voters pass the Political Reform Act, it simultaneously created the FPPC, which you hear us talk about somewhat frequently. And they administer and enforce the law, as well as help inform and assist the public officials, employees and candidates how to comply with not only the Political Reform Act, but they have the power to pass guidelines and things like that, and have additional requirements as well outside of the Political Reform Act. So when it starts talking about financial interests, we do want you guys to reach out to us and say, I think I may have a financial interest. We will determine whether or not it is, or could be, a financial interest, and then our office will recommend that you talk to the FPPC. As an attorney, I represent the commission and the county as a whole. I do not represent individual commissioners. And the FPPC is very specific towards individual commissioners, individual actors, agents, employees. There's also a safe harbor provision in the FPPC, which is why we also direct you to the FPPC a lot. If you're confused whether or not you have a financial interest, you can submit a letter to seek formal advice by the FPPC. If they send you a letter back, which they will, they're very good about it, saying yes or no, if you're later sued in court, you can use that letter and say, I have no liability because the FPPC said that it wasn't a financial interest. Whether or not that's going to be upheld is how much you disclose. If you're like, oh, I may own one or two, you know, farms here and there, versus I own a farm right next to the project, or something like that, how much you disclose could be brought into whether or not it's going to safe harbor you. What we give you as advice of the county council's office will never safe harbor you, which is why we always recommend that you go to the FPPC.
And that's in Sacramento, right? The office in Sacramento?
Mm-hmm.
Not your local elections office?
Right, right, but there's online resources. You don't have to drive to Sacramento to seek their formal advice.
Right, but I mean, it's the Sacramento office, the local office.
Right.
Quick question, is it, are, can we, is it our discretion whether or not we need to let you know if we've written to the FPPC?
That's within your discretion. If you don't want to let us know, that's fine. The issue that arises with that is if you've written the FPPC, and you need to recuse on an item for due process or bias reasons, that's when we would not want to know. Not only do we want to know, but the public has a right to know, because if you recuse because of an FPPC reason, there's a conflict and recusal requires disclosure. So FPPC, conflict and recusals, I guess this was the next slide. They require officials to disclose the financial interest, and then you have to disqualify yourself from participating in the decision. FPPC regulations require that the disclosure be made immediately prior to a consideration of an agenda item. The disclosure needs to identify each type of financial interest, we'll kind of get into those a little bit later. You have stock interests, you have business interests, you have property interests, things like that. And then you would need to include particular information about that interest, which would be the name of the position, the business, the type of position you held in that business, your address, the APN of the real property, the date of, the source of a gift, if it's a gift, things like that. Very specific information has to be given at the recusal stage. Partial absence from a meeting does not excuse disclosure requirements. So if you walk into a meeting late and items are being deliberated that you needed to recuse from, doesn't count. Maybe you weren't there at the beginning, outset, you need, and then you show up for the second meeting because it's been continued, you would need to recuse at that point as well.
One clarifying question there. If there was an item that you needed to recuse from, but say it was at the beginning of a meeting, and you just showed up after that item was heard, would you still have to disclose that recusal?
Yes.
Okay.
So going back to Commissioner Scapdall's question, these are the types of financial interests that you can have. These are not all, but these are the ones that happen most frequently. Business holdings, which can be a management position in a business entity. You say business entity because it can be a partnership, a corporation, various nonprofit, whatever the formation documents are. Investment interest, we see this a lot with, with stocks. So if you have an investment that's $2,000 or more in a stock, maybe we have a telecommunications project before you and you own stock in that telecommunications company, if it's $2,000 or more, or 10% ownership in the interest, you would need to recuse yourself from that. Stocks, joint ventures, partnerships, things like that. The exception is mutual funds. Obviously, mutual funds are usually a conglomeration of a bunch of different business entities that you may not necessarily know each individual ownership interest, so you, you don't have to recuse on mutual funds. Real property interest valued at $2,000 or more, with the way real property works, that's pretty much any real property holding. Even if it's owned in some sort of joint ownership, things like that, or you have some sort of tangential interest. Maybe you're a beneficiary of a trust that the real property may come into at a later point in time, things like that. You would need to consider that sort of situation as well. So income, which is $500 or more over the 12 months, which also includes income of your spouse. I think this is the one you were bringing up, so at some point you may time out. And then donor gifts, aggregate of $250 or more within 12 months of a decision. Again, when we put donor, we're talking about campaign contributions. If you're ever on a campaign, and then you're a commissioner, or maybe your supervisor, or your city council, whatever, whatever you ran for, whatever position you campaigned for, you would need, we would ask that you come to us and talk to us about whether or not that's going to be an issue for you down the road. Because there's a lot of exemptions to campaign contributions. Real estate distance, there's a lot of presumptions with real estate distance, so owning real property valued at $2,000 or more, you're going to have a presumption which is 500 feet within, and then you have between 500 and 1,000 feet, and then over 1,000 feet. And these presumptions are what the court uses to determine what you should have done. And so then it's a burden-shifting device on who needs to present evidence. So if you're less than 500 feet, the court's going to presume that you do have a conflict, unless you are able to present evidence that you don't have a conflict. If it's between 500 and 1,000 feet, you're going to be presumed to also have a conflict if the decision would change the development potential, income-producing potential, highest and best use. If it alters traffic levels, intensity, parking view, privacy, noise, inequality, market value, a lot of these, they're applicable. They come up no matter what, so even within your...
How do you figure the 500 feet? Is it like air mile, or is it Google it, distance? How do you?
Like as the crow flies. If there's a question, planning and building has a great mapping system.
How close am I? I thought it was 300 feet, but that's the notification.
Yeah, it's, it's a direct line shot, so it doesn't be like, well, if I got in my car and then I drove around, obviously with roads, sometimes you're, it could take miles for you to get to your neighbor's property, based off of connections and where you're at, so it's, it's as the crow flies. And then 1,000 feet or more is presumed not to be material, but it may be rebutted. And this applies to everyone. And this applies to everyone, up here at least, so I'm also subject to this as well. And so I've had to recuse on projects before, and so I will have to walk away, I'll have to recuse myself, you'll have to have a different attorney for that hearing because I can't represent you for that. John's also subject, Dr. Ford's also subject to that as well.
So if it's within 1,000 feet, we should let you know, and then you'll tell us if it's an issue?
If you feel like you're close and it's even over 1,000 feet, you can let us know, depending on what it is. Because evidence can be introduced, it's a presumption, right? So evidence can be introduced that even though it's over 1,000 feet, it's going to affect your property because of X, Y, and Z. But that burden's not on you to present evidence, like it is under the 500-feet rule, it's on whoever's accusing you of there being a conflict.
And it could be affected in a positive or negative way, right?
So, it seems fairly straightforward when you're considering a project that has like a distinct location, but when we're talking about things like the McKinleyville Town Center Plan, which I haven't seen it, but I presume it's going to look at some zoning and some traffic things, and like really start to get into the impacts that are listed in there. Where's the line of like, when you're looking at high-level, long-range planning that like impacts large swaths of the county, like what are we, how do you start navigating whether or not it's going to impact your property?
Those are really hard questions that we say, "Talk to the FPPC" about, because they're going to give you a letter, and that letter changes the presumption model. If you have a letter saying it's okay, which is why our office's advice is, "Let us know, we'll help you navigate whether or not it's even an issue to bring to the FPPC." You know, if you say, "Oh, I live right next door," we're going to just say, "You should probably recuse," without needing a formal letter of advice from the FPPC. But once you start getting into those really complicated questions of, "This is going to cause people to drive their lights by me," or things like that. Commissioner Mulder has definitely mentioned at times where it's something maybe wasn't close to his property, but it affected it in some way, but maybe didn't affect the direct value, because that's really what you're thinking of when you're thinking of these sort of interests, is the value on your property. Not whether it's going to inconvenience you as a person, but whether or not there is an ability for your property to go up or down by $2,000.
Well, and I would just add, like, we should be concerned at all times about the appearance that it could be influencing us, even if it's not. So like, I've disclosed something that was further than 1,000 feet, just because I didn't want anyone to be like, to say that it could have been affecting my judgment, or something like that, so.
Right. In event of a true conflict, you would have to recuse disclosing like, "I live nearby," or "I drive past this every day." Again, that's not going to require you to recuse unless the approval or disapproval of that project affects your property $2,000 or more. Even if it's staying, right, your property value wouldn't change, right, for a disapproval, but it would change in the event of approval, then that is a $2,000 consideration that you would need to recuse for.
Just to clarify that, this is separate from Form 700, there's a lot of overlap, but for example, I think Form 700 doesn't require disclosure of primary residence, or something along those lines. So this is financial interests on individual agendized items?
Yes, yes, yes.
And then, following up on that, this is if you're, like you mentioned, a beneficiary, whereas Form 700 wouldn't apply.
Right, you wouldn't, I think there's certain trust information in your Form 700 that you would need to disclose. If you're a trust or a beneficiary of a trust in some capacity, I do think you have to disclose that on your Form 700. But yeah, this would be a particular item. So if you work for a company that considered the item, if you worked for a tribe that had input on the item, real estate distance, things like that, you're starting to get into either information or financial. That's when the conflict starts to occur with project items, as opposed to Form 700, which we will kind of briefly over-lance, which is just something you should fill out every year as a requirement of law. So, another issue that arises a lot is contractual self-dealing. So you shouldn't, a commissioner should not be financially interested in any contract made by them in their official capacity, which they are members, nor shall they be purchasers at any sale or vendors of any purchase made by them in official capacity. This gets really convoluted as well, but if you work on a project, you approve it, then you can't necessarily bid on that project later to be the contractor on that project, because then you're doing some sort of contractual self-dealing to try and promote your financial interests by working on a project thereafter. And contract is pretty broad under this, so it doesn't need to be a signed contract. It can be any agreement to purchase goods, sell goods, employment contract, leases, development agreements, things like that. There is remote interest exceptions, so if you guys voted in favor of allowing a store to go forth, you're not going to be dinged for buying, you know, an avocado from that store. But those sort of remote dealing exceptions, you can ask us about those, and we can help And now I'm moving on from financial interests into more of land use, land and environmental land, and we're going to start with county power. So did anyone have any other questions about financial interests? So, county power is given and designated to political subdivisions as part of the state. We are subdivisions of the state pursuant to the California Constitution. Counties are created for advancing state policy in the areas of certain finance, education, social welfare, transportation, administration of justice, governmental agencies, and exercising certain powers of the state. The major function is really to assist the state in administering certain state programs. We have the power, and police power, to make and enforce laws within our local jurisdiction relating to certain police sanitary and certain ordinances, as long as they don't conflict with state general law. Under the police powers, we have pretty plenary authority to govern our subjects, only to certain limitations that are stated. So limitations on county power that are stated is the prohibition on the gift of public funds, so that's really, public funds have to be used for a public purpose and not for a private purpose. We see this pretty frequently, actually. Unlawful delegation of authority, which is that all counties' power is vested within the Board of Supervisors, and they cannot delegate certain parts of that power unless there's sort of, it's either a ministerial task, or there's some sort of administrative process that allows delegation. So in the case of the Planning Commission, even though it's not a ministerial, it's a discretionary task, it can be delegated because of the appeals that brings it back before the board. And then you can't contract away certain police powers, so we couldn't, that isn't going to really come up with you guys very often, but we couldn't hire someone to do our powers right or ordinance for us, and then it not come back before our board or our commission for consideration. So in term of our land use framework, we're going to have the federal constitution up top, then the state constitution, general plans, certain applicable specific and community plans, zoning ordinances, relief from zoning ordinances, which is use permits, variances, developmental permits, all sorts of permits, subdivision map act, and then building permits. So in general, the general plan is the comprehensive plan, and it's the top hierarchy for jurisdictions' land use regulations. Generally, the state doesn't talk a lot about certain land use regulations with a lot of caveats, which we'll kind of get into. But the planning agency usually prepares a comprehensive, long-term general plan for the physical development of the county, so we redo these every decade or so.
Going back to the previous slide on land use framework and hierarchy, does any applicable specific plan mean specifically community plans, or is there a group of plans that that encompasses?
Community plans, unless stated in the community plan that they're going to be the hierarchy for some reason, are down there. There's also like local coastal plans, things like that, and unless it explicitly says it's the hierarchy document, I think McKinleyville has a community plan, things like that. So those would be underneath the general plan unless it's stated in the general plan itself, that they're intended to be construed at together.
And related to that, plans such as like a regional transportation plan, that isn't... Yeah.
It's an applicable plan for sure, in the hierarchy of things. It's probably not in that same hierarchical position. We can go to the next one. So I'm going to move into zoning. Zoning is what we see in the Humboldt County Code. We have a lot of zoning, it's very specific. We also have two types of zoning, which is our text sort of zoning, we have a lot of charts, we have a lot of tables, we have a lot of words. And then we have map zoning, which you can kind of see with like our GIS map, that's also encapsulated in Humboldt County Code, but there's maps that are associated with that. So these type of regulations are type and intensity of use, lot sizes, height limits on structures, lot coverage, setback, parking, use characteristics, certain definitions and processes. Then we have conditional use permits, special permits, development permits, these are not encompassing of all permits. These are really land use permits in general. So these sorts of things are expressly provided for in an ordinance, but are subject to discretion and conditions. So it'll be contemplated that a use is allowed within the zoning tax with a CUP. So CUPs and all other permits regulate land, and land use permits, I want to clarify, not all permits, land use permits. They regulate land, not individuals, therefore, they run with the land, which means if we have a particular applicant, and they get a permit, and then they subsequently sell their property, the permit would run with the land, not with the person, so the permit is still applicable to subsequent owners of property. There needs to be consistency with the general plan and the other zoning conditions, and they can only be revoked after due process is given, which is the revocation hearings that we usually have. Humboldt County Code and the government code, a lot of the Humboldt County Code qualifies things that are found in state law about what's required for permits. You have to have certain findings that need to be made, this is done via resolution, and that it conforms with the general plan, an open space plan, a community plan, whatever's applicable, that it's consistent with the zoning, and that it conforms to the requirements of regulations. The big ones that we see before the commissioner law are whether or not that the permit and/or the conditions will be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties, or improvements within the vicinity. And then there's residential density findings that also need to be made in certain situations, all of them. The next one is variances. The difference between variances and permits is that variances are not explicitly provided for in the zoning code, but there are sort of waivers of zoning standards, or the strict application of the zoning standard that deprives a particular piece of property, certain privileges that other properties have within the same zoning code. So that's like, the unique physical characteristics of the property would be the size, the shape, the topography, the location of the surroundings. So whether there's a river that cuts through it, whether there's a lot of jagged rocks, maybe there's, just the size of it is too small, maybe it's catty-cornered, so the size isn't usable space, those are the things that you're looking for when determining whether you want to grant a variance. They need to be conditioned so that you're not granting a special privilege to the person of that land, different from the people who are also likewise zoned, and these also run with the land. Similar to conditional use permits, you need to make certain findings. The findings for variances is that there's exceptional, extraordinary circumstances that apply to the property that don't apply to the other properties generally classed of the same use or same zone within the vicinity. That strict and literal interpretation and enforcement of a regulation would result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship. That granting the variance does not grant a special privilege, and then kind of going back to our great one that we use a lot, is whether or not the variance will be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. I'm going to talk briefly about like exactions, which are things like conditions that we place on certain permits and variances. These are conditions of approval when we grant permits or variances. So conditions, including exactions, need to relate to the actual impact of the development and the problem that it is intended to solve. Non-proportional conditions and exactions actually amount to a takings under the United States Constitution for the minimum of rights. So the cases that we see here are, we call them Nolan and Dolan, they're our bread and butter when we go and talk about exactions. So Nolan held that permit conditions have to have an essential nexus between the condition itself and then the purpose for imposing that condition. So if you're worried about the public health, safety, and welfare, the condition and the finding that you make to allow for that condition would need to associate to the public health, safety, and welfare at that point. You can't just make a finding that doesn't relate tangentially to the issue with the finding that you're required to make. And then there needs to be a rough proportionality or a degree of connection between what that condition is and the impacts of the proposed development. So basically, with like an electricity crisis that we're like having, or climate crisis that we're having in California, you can't put the entire crisis on one applicant and make them cover the entirety of the climate crisis, but you can do some conditions that impose on the project to lessen sort of that exacerbation of that issue.
I've noticed staff, in their summary of projects, reiterate some of these things, and just want to emphasize how much I appreciate that. It's really helpful for understanding what our boundaries are.
So, moving into our permit resolution findings, these are so, so important. So the findings that are laid out in the resolution by staff are actually a recommendation based off of the evidence presented to staff, and that's already within the record. The resolutions are structured in a way that the required findings that we need to make pursuant to the Humboldt County Code for the conditional use permit or the variance, depending on what type of permit or variances before you, are made, and explicitly made. So the commissioners have an obligation to review the resolution that's attached to the staff report, to ensure that they agree with the findings before you vote in favor of adopting the recommended findings. And so commissioners can and should make additional findings as they see appropriate. You also should delete findings that you do not find appropriate, and this would be through a motion with the other commissioners, who would vote in favor or against deleting it. If you're adding a condition to a project, or acting in some way other than what was recommended by staff at the outset, you need to make a finding to support that decision because it's not included in the recommended resolution, because it's newly added at this point in time. So what we've seen before is that the commission will vote in favor of doing something, but then forget to vote for a finding to support that, and then it gets overturned later. So failure to make your findings can result in the commissioner's decision being overturned, not just by the Board of Supervisors, but again, if you appeal all the way through the judiciary...
But again, if you peel all the way through the judiciary, you need to have substantial evidence to support an administrative record, and that evidence is shown through findings. And so if you don't put it in the findings and administrative record, the court can say that was not substantial evidence and that you abused your discretion.
One of the ones that's come up over and over again is the renewable energy versus generators. And I know it's been mentioned, well, that's not a requirement, and for a while we were making everybody do it, and then maybe a couple of people didn't have to do it. Is that okay that we're adding a finding like that?
The conditions that you put onto projects, if they're disparate, there should be reasons to justify that action, whether it's that this particular project is very large and is going to consume a lot of electricity, or that they have proposed solar down the road, so it doesn't necessarily impact the same way as having five diesel generators at whatever horsepower. These specific considerations should be made as a finding on the record to support your decision of why you're doing what you're doing.
And we should be consistent in applying that across the board. I think a lot of the times it was because of the fuel and not wanting to have fire hazards and all kinds of things.
And we'll also talk about a little bit later, the CCLUO versus the CMLUO, because the decision-making for the different types of permits would be different based off of the baseline at the time. And so those considerations are a little bit different. And then there's also considerations with SEQA in the resolution, which I'll also get into briefly later.
But can we have that kind of discussion on a more general level? And then from that point on, staff would put them in or not put them in?
No, you need to make a finding and vote in favor of a finding.
Project by project.
And...
I just would add that as the commission has consistently acted on things, we have incorporated that into the conditions and the findings.
And that's what I've seen. So then we don't have these hour-long discussions all the time.
Exactly.
At that point, it's included in the resolution, and then by voting in favor of the project, you're voting to say, I approve this condition. I approve the finding that's associated with this condition. The next one that we're moving to is nonconforming uses. You have legal and nonlegal, nonconforming uses. A legal nonconforming use is a use that was established and conducted prior to the date of a zoning ordinance change which prohibited that use. You'll probably see this with the billboards or passing an ordinance. Ones that proceeded are not going to be subject to the same regulations as the ones that are getting built post-adoption of that legislation. There'll be a legal nonconforming use. There's other examples that we'll see as time goes on. We also have, just briefly, amortization periods, which can happen with nonconforming uses. That's not necessarily something we need to delve deeply into. The next is the Subdivision Map Act. I love the Subdivision Map Act. It is to encourage orderly development and assure proper improvements are made in an area so that it doesn't become an undue burden to the taxpayer. These improvements include sidewalks, roads, utility easements, all sorts of things to ensure that as the development occurs, as parcels are made or merged, that we're protecting individual real estate buyers and preventing fraud and make sure we have this orderly development. This is applicable, that property can't be sold lease finance until it's legally subdivided with a tract map or a parcel map. All the Subdivision Map Acts must be consistent with zoning, general plan, or applicable specific plans. Counties can impose conditions. I want to flag that. Conditions also subject to exaction law, Nolan and Dolan. And so those in excess, they can't be in excess, and then the conditions need not violate the Subdivision Map Act. So you can't make a condition that's against what the Subdivision Map Act says. A parcel map with limited conditions is required if the subdivision will result in four or few parcels, which is considered a minor subdivision. A tentative and final map with very comprehensive conditions is required if a subdivision results in five or more parcels, which is a major subdivision. And staff and county council's office works very diligently to ensure that we know what's being created with the parcels. So that's land use hierarchy. We're moving into the California Environmental Quality Act, which is part of the land use hierarchy. Does anyone have any questions about the information I presented over this? So the California Environmental Quality Act was passed in 1970. This is also one of my favorite ones. And it requires government agencies to consider the environmental consequences of their actions before approving policies or committing to a course of action. Environment is pretty broadly defined to include land, air, water, mineral, fluorofon, and noise, and objects of historical or set of significance. While it can be things that are felt, heard, seen, like personal, like how it affects certain people, like whether people are upset about it, or they have emotions related to it, it's not considered in the environment. Something that makes SEQA special over the analogous National Environmental Policy Act, which is NEPA, is that they're both disclosure laws that disclose about the environmental impacts, but SEQA requires where mitigation can occur, it must occur to lessen the impact. So the purpose is to inform government decision-makers and the public about potential environmental effects of a proposed activity, identify ways environmental damage can be avoided or reduced, prevent significant unavoidable environmental damage by requiring the adoption of these alternatives or mitigation measures, and disclose to the project why a project was approved if there is a significant unavoidable environmental impact that cannot be mitigated to less than significant. So SEQA components is the Public Resource Code, state SEQA guidelines, there's local rules and guidelines that implement SEQA. These include certain thresholds. Usually the local agency has some say in thresholds. There's case law and turn general opinions. So I usually use this, it's my favorite book. It has the Public Resource Code and SEQA guidelines. They have some case law on here. You don't have to have this book, but it is available online for free to download. I think they're changing that. I went to a conference with them like three months ago. They said, download it while it's free.
The SEQA process. So the first question is whether or not it is a project. And then if it is a project, there's going to be some preliminary review. There may be preliminary review to determine whether or not it is a project within the meaning of SEQA. If it is determined that there is a project, we're going to see whether or not there's an exemption that's applicable. It can be categorical or statutory. There's differences between those. Statutory are not subject to exception. Categorical are subject to exception, which basically means like if it's exempt and it's categorical exemption, could that exemption be accepted because of an unusual circumstance that then requires you to do environmental analysis anyway? You would then scope the project, which would basically be whether, which environmental factors to consider. An initial study is prepared if it's not subject to an exemption, and the potential is significant if each environmental impact is considered. After you do this initial study, then you determine whether there's a negative declaration, a mitigated negative declaration, or an environmental impact report. A negative declaration is where the initial study concludes that there will not be a significant effect on the environment. A mitigated declaration is that there will not be, yeah, there will not be significant effect on the environment after mitigation, and the mitigation is going to reduce a potentially adverse impact down to less than significant. An environmental impact report, you can still have, even if everything is mitigated down to less than significant, all that it needs to arise for an environmental impact report is that there's substantial evidence in the record, that a fair argument exists, that the project may have a significant effect on the environment even with mitigation. And substantial evidence as well as fair argument is case law.
So then moving on to mitigation. An EIR needs to describe feasible mitigation measures to minimize a project's significant environmental effects. It doesn't need to completely eliminate the environmental impacts of a project. It just needs to lessen them down below the threshold. Mitigation measures need to be described in detail and not left for future formulation. Details are usually adopted in an MMRP. MMRPs are not required, but they're so easy for when you're enforcing the mitigation after the adoption. It says who needs to do what, what type of checks need to be done, and it lays it out very clearly.
So the details of how mitigation can be achieved under certain measures can be deferred pending completion of future studies if there's a mitigation menu. So mitigation menus are like if, why, then, be. So if it shows that it's very salinated, then we're going to do this very specifically instead. You can't just say, oh, we'll do something if it has high saline. You have to describe in detail what you're going to do based off of the results of future studies. So failure to do proper detail of mitigation measures is improper deferment of mitigation.
So how does this apply to you guys? SEQA findings operate very similarly to permit findings and are laid out explicitly in the resolution. All of the environmental factors considered and then their level of significance is included in the findings. So if you disagree with the level of significance, that's something that you would need to point out. If you point to evidence in the record that supports that decision. They, staff structure SEQA findings in a way to reflect the whole of a project. Failure to do a whole of a project can cause issues, and it encompasses all environmental considerations. So as I've seen the staff report, we usually have it broken up into no impact, less than significant impact, less than significant impact mitigation. We then describe mitigation, and then if there's significant overriding consideration, if there's an impact that we can't mitigate less than that. And they're broken up so that you can see each one. Again, it's your obligation as a commissioner to ensure that you agree with the resolution findings. If you don't agree with the environmental analysis as it's done, you can send staff back for further revisions, or you can make a motion if you feel you have all of the evidence before you that you need to make that sort of decision. Courts provide local decision-makers with deference and determinations of facts if there's substantial evidence, again, substantial evidence in the records to support a finding. So your failure to make a finding can require the court to find that you abuse your discretion in coming to a decision. Judicial findings of noncompliance can result in voiding an environmental decision, which then would, then void associated decisions. Like if you said, I'm going to pass the, or vote to adopt a permit or issue a permit in favor of an approval of a permit based off of the SEQA, the permit would then also
So the judicial review are based on the substantial evidence standard. These sorts of things, there's plenaries, many, many different types of SEQA actions. The ones that we see a lot are failure to consider all environmental impacts, failure to implement the appropriate level of analysis, failure to adhere to publication and noticing requirements, and effective failure to respond to comments from agencies or comments from the publics, certain improper delegation of decision-making or police power, abdication of police power, or failure to like rate the environmental impact at the appropriate
So here are just some land use state laws in the government code. So we have these, a lot of these laws, we have certain ancillary laws in the Humboldt County Code. So we have our own general plan that's very specific to us. We have our own specific plans, but the power and authority of where they come from and the requirements of what needs to be included or what is not allowed to be included comes from the government code, and that's all found here, except for SEQA, which is in the Public Resource Code. So moving into cannabis ordinances, I'm bringing this up just because we do a lot of cannabis projects here at the planning commissions. There's two cannabis ordinances, and then as we analyze each permit and we make findings either with SEQA or the permit findings themselves, they should reflect which ordinance you're voting in favor of the project for. So we have the CMLUO, which is the medical marijuana one, which is what we colloquially call 1.0, and then we have the CCLUO. So the CMLUO was established in 2016, and it was the first that established commercial cannabis regulations associated with medical use. It was adopted, the SEQA, under a mitigated negative declaration. And the baseline includes jungle or the previously non-permitted grows, so grows that happened before 2016. So there's mitigation measures and things like that that are associated with that document based off of what the baseline was under SEQA at that time. So applicants had to show that they were an existing grow. The time to apply for 1.0 projects has now lapsed. So no one can apply under that anymore. It's less stringent of a requirement than the CCLUO. And if you're curious about the different requirements under each one, it's on the planning website. Each one is still there. They're not necessarily found in the Humboldt County Code index because the Medical Marijuana Act has now been repealed. And so if you're looking at the requirements, it's easy just to pull it from the planning website. The CCLUO repealed and replaced the CMLUO, and that's how all applications which are received are processed from here on out. And that was adopted pursuant to an environmental impact report, which is a heightened report with additional mitigation measures that went beyond what baseline was, which went beyond existing grows. So there's more stringent conditions and calculations where there's these additional contemplations. We still have 1.0 applicants coming through that have properly submitted, and maybe their information is lacking, things like that. When you guys have the planning commission agenda and you get the staff report and things like that, you should be looking to see whether or not it's a 1.0 project or a 2.0 project, and then basing your environmental and permit decisions and findings based off of which ordinance the permit is coming through under. Yeah, and in the recommended findings, it will say that. We start with that standard from staff as a recommendation, but as you add conditions or take away conditions, those are things you're going to want to be apprised of, especially under the takings context, the exactions context, about whether or not something is proportional to the permit itself.
I'm sorry, can I take us back a little bit to general Humboldt County permit findings back on slide 47 or page 24? So under the public health, safety, and welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements to the vicinity, we often hear public comment around property value impacts. Is that something that is potentially considered materially injurious to properties?
Yeah. So when you look at making findings and things like that, you can use public comment. The best thing to do is to talk about where the people are from. Courts have really delved really deeply into what constitutes substantial evidence. So if you're a neighbor and you have a large impact, that's going to be weightier for the court in terms of evidence than if you're basing your impact on some, on a project that's in Southern Humboldt based off of someone who's saying it's affecting their property values that lives in the Eureka area because they're not necessarily a neighbor. So you would want to make findings associated with that. The weight of the evidence is all going to be within the court's realm if you get sued on it. So yeah, but property values themselves are definitely a consideration.
But substantial evidence is the key component there. Somebody getting up and screaming that it's going to ruin my property values isn't sufficient. They have to demonstrate why it's going to affect their property values.
I can kind of turn this into a SEQA case that came before us. There was a bunch of, there was a SEQA document or a permit that was a SEQA document, actually, that was adopted for evacuation routes, and we had, not we... that was adopted for evacuation routes, and we had, not we, but the county had public comment by local firefighters that said that they didn't think that the evacuation route was sufficient. And then the commission based their decision based off of the local firefighters. And then the court held that that wasn't sufficient because local firefighters are not given that expertise and they don't have the training. It's CAL FIRE and other agencies that are left with that sort of information and decision-making. So basing your evacuation decisions or your findings on evacuations based off of testimony of laypersons was not substantial evidence for the court to uphold the findings of the commission.
Is there a distinction between a majority of the public versus an individual in this, in these requirements?
No, it depends on who the individual is. So neighbors are afforded more impact. So if a neighbor is someone who lives a couple, if they say, "I live three houses down and there's traffic impacts that I'm aware about," then the court gives them a higher evidentiary value and their testimony a higher evidentiary value based off of the fact that they live close by. But just the majority of the public saying something, there's still a majority, laypeople, unless they have expertise in that matter, it depends on what they're providing testimony about. So as I said, evacuation routes is a very technical matter. So people just saying anything, even if it's local firefighters, did not arise to that level of technical expertise, and that's the weight of the evidence. That's what we mean when we say substantial, is certain evidence should be weighted greater value.
Just to follow, sorry, to follow up on that. So hypothetical, but you know, an evacuation route that CAL FIRE thinks is more appropriate results in something that could impact an individual's property. So is, I'm assuming it's, everything's case by case, but that could potentially be.
So if the individual was one of the last people to be evacuated by CAL FIRE's proposed evacuation route, and they're saying, "I'm gonna have to sit in traffic for two and a half hours because you put my cul-de-sac at the very last people to be evacuated," their testimony could be given greater weight than other people. In those situations, especially legislative situations, the general populace has more say than if it's a project-specific one, because in project-specific ones, and you really delve into who actually is impacted and why are they impacted.
So is a property appraiser a qualified individual to substantiate a neighbor's claim that a proposed development is gonna increase or decrease their property value, whether it's a privacy issue or a cannabis farm or anything?
They could be. We've seen public comments before too where the general public goes out and solicits expert advice to substantiate their claims so that the evidential, the findings can be made that the evidence arrives is too substantial. So you would have to look at that information that's provided to you and see whether or not that arises. Someone colloquially saying, "I had an appraiser," look probably isn't gonna be weighted the same as if they submit a public comment with an appraiser's letter, right? Because then that's part of the record.
So when we get a public comment where somebody claims that a development is gonna decrease their property value, do we let them know that they need substantial evidence of this?
You could also try and solicit evidence through asking questions. So where do you live in relation to the property? We kind of already have these presumptions. Is it 1,000 feet, 500 feet? Do you live three miles away? You can ask the sort of information of the public commenter to try and elicit some of those things, because they're not, it's very doubtful they'll know exactly what substantial evidence means.
And I don't think an appraiser's gonna write you that letter anyway. They're gonna look at comps. And so unless they can come up with comparable properties where the situation's the same and there's been, you know, it's gonna be really difficult. First of all, you gotta get one that, they're like months, if not years, behind, but they're gonna look at comparable properties. They're not gonna just say, "Oh yeah, it reduced your property."
Thank you. I just wanna comment on this. I mean, often we hear from neighbors that might be commenting on, let's say, a multifamily development or multi-story building that's going on a piece of property that's already in the general plan, it's already zoned that way. I assume the general plan may be subject to a sequa document itself, so the impacts related to that have already been analyzed. So, I'm making a finding that the property, that the project is in accordance with the planning and the zoning and the sequa impacts have been mitigated. It may have some impact on an adjoining property, but that's already been analyzed, and you know, sometimes it's incumbent, I believe, on the neighboring property owner to understand what the land use zoning is next door. And we can't necessarily mitigate all of their concerns at this meeting.
It's not, the general plan is always based off of a sequa document. We have a very comprehensive sequa document that goes with our general plan and goes with our zoning. And even if we rezone, there's sequa that needs to be done with a rezone associated. And so when you have certain projects before you, especially housing projects that are principally permitted, a lot of those impacts have already been analyzed. You can look at certain site-specific ones, impacts that may not have been considered, whether they are talking about like solar panels on top of the roof line or something like that, which is probably bringing down what was already considered below, what was originally analyzed. But that's called tiering documents. So when we bring a project specific before you that was already analyzed in the community or general plan, that environmental document is wrapped into it, and you should find in the resolutions mention of that document.
I mean, I'm just like getting into impacts on valuation are very complex, and one can make the argument that that particular property was already purchased at a lower value because it's adjacent to a property zone, multifamily housing.
Right.
So I hope that the staff will always do an adequate job of articulating that, the findings. But if you are reading it and finding that that really needs to be a little bit more specific, that would be a really, really appropriate discussion to have about the resolution, especially when those kinds of comments are getting brought up. Ironically, you recently reviewed a similar circumstance where it's consistent with the general plan, consistent with the zoning, consistent with the community plan. For the general plan and the community plan, there were EIRs prepared. So, I mean, that had been long envisioned.
Is it appropriate, though, like in some cases, you have the neighbors come in, we've had this where it's gonna create all this traffic, and maybe they didn't realize they were gonna be right next door to multifamily housing in the future. But if you can mitigate it with the landowner or they voluntarily agree to some concession, is that okay?
That's a slippery slope, because if the property owner is willing to negotiate something in order to be a good neighbor, yeah, that's totally appropriate. But there's a fine line between an extraction from a property owner for something that really shouldn't be considered, an environmental or a project impact. And right now, we're really talking about a finding on the project, public health, safety, and welfare. And so what's the impact of constructing multifamily residential on a property zones designated in the community plan, designated in the general plan, and adjacent to property with the same zoning and land use? What's the impact there?
And when he's talking about these exactions and things like this, that's the constitutional issue, the due process issues, that we can get ourselves into a takings claim because someone purchased property that was zoned, multifamily residential, and the neighbors are complaining about the sort of impacts that standard multifamily residential homes would have. If it's above and beyond what a standard multifamily home would have, then you can more closely tie that nexus between the condition and the problem you're trying to solve. But it's already been contemplated, then at what point is the condition excessive in relation? And that sort of takings issue, an applicant can appeal all the way through to the courts, and then we would either, if it's a takings, we either have to pay them if we didn't zone it, or we'd have to redo the zoning back and the condition, take the condition back.
Unless you're coming in and asking for some sort of variance, like, "I don't wanna put in as many parking spaces." That's different. We can hold the ground, say, "No, you have to."
If you make the findings. They're allowed to ask for variances, but if you say that we can't make the findings to support the variance, then you would also wanna identify why you couldn't make those findings to support the variance in the records, since that's something that we allow by matter of law.
I just wanna say thank you for bringing that up. Thank you for explaining that, and hopefully there'll be more housing projects coming through Humboldt County in the near future.
There's been a lot of state laws that we're having to catch up to, and if we don't go along with them, even though we may personally not want them to happen, because it's gonna change neighborhoods, you know, that are single-family homes, but we still have to do it because it's a state law, right?
Right. That's kind of the hierarchy. When I put up that hierarchy and framework, we have preemption issues, things like that. There's different types of preemption. There's explicit, and then there's implicit preemption, where the state intends to occupy the field, you're gonna have some preemption. If they make some regulations here and there, we ran into that with like the billboard ordinance, the state had preempted some areas, but especially, especially with housing, the state has taken over a lot of control about what local regulations are allowed to do and not do.
And if the city or county is not keeping up with those laws, then they can come in and preempt you and approve a subdivision that maybe the local community doesn't want to have.
Correct. All right, last few slides are just really about more of the planning commission rules, code of conduct and ethics. So the voting procedures is the Rosenberg Rules of Order. We also have some planning commission rules that are provided. With order and decorum, the chair will preserve strict order and decorum, which means preventing that threatening or disruptive verbal attacks on commissioners, staff, citizens. And then you're gonna confine the debate to the item under discussion. Commissioners also need to be civil and decorous. So you have a First Amendment right, all commissioners have a First Amendment right, but you should be practicing civility and decorum in the discussions and debates. So that's refraining from abusive conduct, personal charges, unsubstantiated allegations, disclosure of confidential information, or verbal attacks on the characters or motives of other commissioners, boards, staff, public, all of that, which brings the government into disrepute.
I have one thing, and this is, came up, and I saw inappropriate behavior of a commissioner that's no longer here, but, and I was waiting for you as staff to stop it, but then I was told later, "It's our responsibility to stop it," right?
It's the chair's duty to maintain order and decorum at meetings. Unfortunately, in that situation, maybe the vice chair should have stepped up. It was a hard situation because the person who was supposed to be maintaining order and decorum was the, was.
But we, as commissioners, need to understand that. If we're getting out of hand, then we can call for a point of order, or is that the appropriate?
Point of order, yeah.
Okay. Does the civil and decorous apply off the dais? Or, like, I don't have any intentions of being rude to anybody here, but like, I have seen situations arise in our very small community where like folks have gotten into, gotten into situations where they've been rude and about their fellow commissioners in public spaces, and I'm just curious about the breadth.
So you should be mindful that these rules are adopted by the board of supervisors, and as they have authority to appoint, they also have authority to take away, even at-large commissioners. It's a different process for at-large commissioners than it is for direct appointments, but whether or not they view your conduct either on or off bench as civil and decorous is a decision that can be brought before them.
On the diversity, equity, inclusion part as well, I noticed that there's additional mandatory onboarding education components to that, and I just wanted to highlight that, and also was curious where those materials are.
So I'm gonna move through the rest of the slide, and then I'll kinda talk about the resources, and then I have a slide on mandatory trainings.
Before we leave planning commission rules, just, I just have a question or comment on our meetings. When we have an item before us, we first have a staff report usually, and then there's an opportunity for us as commissioners to ask questions of staff. And I have a concern that sometimes we, at that, in that process as a commissioner, sometimes we get a little bit beyond questions of staff, and we start expressing or disclosing maybe our feelings about a project or where a project's heading, and we haven't actually heard from the public yet. So my comment is, I think when we're asking, at that point, we need to be really careful that we're just framing a question or clarification of staff at that point, and that we're not starting to lean towards or express our own personal thoughts about a project. And I see us kinda err on that from time to time, so just kind of heads up, maybe?
I would agree. And also duly noted in trying to, as we engage in conversation, as I'm chairing, trying to remember, remind people that rein back in will be one of my goals. It's kind of something I've mentally been trying to work on, just really honing in on just clarifying questions, because I think it's, I agree, I don't think I agree, it's unfair to the public if, say I start expressing something one way, and then someone might not get up and they're like, "Oh, so commissioner so-and-so already doesn't," you know, they're leaning one way, so they, you may have ruined their due process of the potential to speak to try to be heard. So I, that's something I would really, really like to be mindful of.
Thank you.
And those sorts of issues of how things proceed, unless it's a Brown Act violation, will be handled by the chair. So that's one of the duties. The specific duties is that the chair opens and presides all meetings, you welcome the public, you summarize the commission procedures, you moderate all discussions, you lead the commission in deliberation, you sign all records of the commission action, you call special meetings, and then you preserve order and decorum. The vice chair's duty is to stand in for the chair if the chair is absent. The secretary's duty is to maintain minutes of the meetings, that's planning and building staff, and then we bring them for you for adoption. And then the county council's duty is, we're just designated legal counsel, so all questions of law when staff should be referred to county council's office for opinion. In advance of the meeting, preferably, or in the discretion of the commission after the continuance of an item, sometimes putting us on the spot puts us in a bad place, because we don't wanna give you our legal advice and then disclose it to the public, because then we waive all attorney-client privilege with regard to that item. And then sometimes if we say something, we don't wanna put the county in a pinch because of our legal opinion on the dais. So sometimes it's not necessarily appropriate to ask the question publicly, but sometimes it is.
I just had a comment, and I think it was going back to the previous comment that Commissioner Scavdill and Mulder made, which I do agree with, and I think it's really important to not let those questions veer into opinions or skepticism or whatever. But I just, I'm sort of thinking through the sort of counterargument, which I think sometimes as chair, I have allowed questions to proceed which were not just clarifying something that was in the staff report, but maybe asking the staff for some other information that wasn't covered. And while there's a part of me that would rather be like, "Well, let's just save that till later," on the other hand, I guess I was thinking that, well, the public only gets one opportunity to comment, so if there is information that might be relevant to them that these questions can draw out, I guess that might be beneficial to the public. But it's, but I'm not really sure, always wear that line. But I'm not really sure always where that line is, you know? So, because I certainly agree with you that sometimes we just go on too long with those questions before we've even taken public comment.
The Brown Act itself only requires that you provide public comment before coming to a decision on the matter. So once you start expressing opinions as to what your ultimate decision will be, that's when you start crossing that threshold.
Definitely get that.
But if you're asking questions to help facilitate that decision-making process and still remaining open, then that's still appropriate, because I agree, it's nice for the public to have and see. Also, in that vein, if you ask for something and ask to come back, and then we open it up, we do this a couple of times, we've done this. Anytime there's a hearing that's been continued, if public comment has already happened, we don't have to reopen public comment. But the second we introduce new additional information that was not included on the original administrative record, we have to reopen it, because now there's new information for the public and applicant to consider. And they have a right to comment on. So these are just some resources, that handbook, there's the planning commission rules. There's a lot on the planning website in terms of even having, like, the county website for general plan, for having the cannabis ordinances, for having the commission rules, code of conducts, all the agendas are posted there. There's a planning commissioner handbook. That handbook is really helpful in terms of duties of the planning commissioner and explaining what the role of a commissioner is. There's SEQA. We have the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. We post a ton of things at OPR, in terms of like, all of our SEQA documents go there. Well, not all, but most of them go there for publication. We also have our, my handy-dandy SEQA book. As I mentioned before, it's online.
I was going to ask about that. Is that the one that's listed there?
It's the second one. If you copy and paste that into your browser, you should be able to pull that up. The Association of Environmental Professionals is the website, so it's at AEP. And I think Laura sent the slides to you via email. So you guys should have access to all of these via email. There's the FPPC. You should just be super familiar with their website. They have a ton of information on conflicts of interest, on contractual self-dealing, Form 700s. And then there's the Brown Act. My favorite brief Brown Act is Open and Public, which was published by the League of California Cities. And then the Brown Act itself has been codified in certain places. There's other resources. If you guys are ever questioning about something, we can send you the whole Public Records Act if you want, whatever you guys desire, we serve for you guys. And then this slide is just talking about mandatory trainings. So every two years, there needs to be a general ethics training. This is actually a government code requirement. FPPC offers this training. I also have to do this training. So annually, you have to do the FPPC Form 700. There's diversity education, and then sexual harassment and abusive conduct training. Diversity education can be racial equity, certain common terms, education in the domain of implicit bias, microaggressions, cultural humility, things like that. I believe, is it planning, can help set you up with getting appropriate training. And then we have certain onboarding training, which is required, which also includes native tribal history education, which planning is also working to ensure we have those trainings available.
So I do have a question. I've taken those mandatory ethics trainings a few times, but this was a really good one. And it was more than two hours. Does this session right now qualify for that first bullet?
I am not certified. Sorry.
All right. Too bad.
If I have to take many of the DEI trainings through work, do those count?
Okay. They should be the same trainings that we offer. So I would, you know, at the end, you kind of get that like little certification, you can download it and say like, I did it. Double dip on that.
I just wanted to echo the sentiment that this was incredibly helpful. Thank you for taking the time to put this all together. I feel like this was a crash course in like half my college education. And you did a great job, so thank you.
I took the Form 700, and I advise everyone to take it, because I think I've done everything wrong from the very beginning. Gotten fined a couple of times, and I don't have anything to hide. So I think it's really important that you take it, because you learn a lot.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Thank you very much. Very helpful. Also, I said this, I'm really thankful that the whole commission was here for this, and that means a lot, I think, for us moving forward with the work we have ahead of us. And from that...
I will have one more thing to say, if that's okay. Please, if you do not have my email, get my email. You can email me directly with questions anytime. You can CC staff. You do not have to CC staff if you don't want to. If you don't have my email, you can call staff, staff will give it to you. Whatever you guys want, in terms of whether it's a legal question that pertains to the jurisdiction, or you serving in some capacity on the commission, I'm here to help you answer questions.
Thanks.
I just, I know we've talked a lot about public records, but my understanding is that like, most of the time, communication with you is protected, correct?
That is correct. Most of the time. We have attorney-client privilege. So if there's some sort of waiver that happens, so if you're writing to me, and then you put someone, a member of the public is CC'd on it, that's not protected, because you've now disclosed it to the public, and the privilege has been waived. If we're just chit-chatting back and forth, and I'm not providing you legal advice, or just talking, then that also wouldn't be protected. I don't see that come up very often. I'm always offering legal advice, so.
I think if you and I are conspiring to commit a crime, that's also an exception.
Yeah, I try to steer away from that, though.
Is that everything with your training? Thank you very much. Do we have anything, report from planner?
I would just advise the commission that the Sutter Parcel Map has been appealed, and that's going to the Board of Supervisors on May 21st. So if you're interested in that, that will be on that agenda.
Can you say the name again?
The Sutter Parcel Map.
But if I heard the training correctly, that would just be to watch or listen and not to give comment. Okay.
What were the grounds of the appeal?
Contesting the commission's ability to require that the county's improvement standards be implemented. So appealed by the applicant. Yes. Sorry, I should have been more clear on that.
Do you have a date that that will go before the supervisors?
May 21st.
Thank you.
And that's everything?
Yeah. Yes.
I don't know if it's appropriate for me to add this in here, but it's more of like a, it is under staff, in my opinion, and maybe if I'm wrong, throw something at me. I think staff's outreach to cannabis applicants has been really positive. Some of the areas that I've personally seen illumination are no longer illuminated. So whatever approach that you have utilized over the last 12 months, I feel has been productive, from what I'm seeing driving down the road.
Thank you. That's good feedback. We have been trying to educate on that point. And if it's okay, I think maybe I would add that last October, the Board of Supervisors adopted a requirement that cannabis cultivators come into currency with their payment of Major S taxes, and also the Planning and Building Department has a $1.6 million account receivable right now, and wanted people to come current on their processing costs. And so at the end of, they had until the end of March to either enter into, to enter into an agreement with the treasure tax collector to pay their Major S taxes by the end of March of 2025, and also to pay their processing costs with Planning and Building Department. So we sent out letters in January, and then March 1st advising permit holders and applicants of this act. We had, I want to get the numbers right here, had 150 people respond before March 31st come in and correct things. And so that was really positive. And then we sent out 368 suspension letters in April. And I believe that we have probably had about a third of those, around 120, people come in since then and resolve that, and get their permit unsuspended, basically. So of 500 people who were out of compliance at the beginning of the year, about half of those have come into compliance. And so it's been a Herculean effort on the part of the Planning and Building Department. We've had about 10 people engaged in making this happen. But it is literally paying dividends. So the downside of that is that there are folks who have not come current, who are either in the application process, or who have permits, who will either be scheduled for revocations later this year, and/or will be scheduled for denial at the zoning administrator. And so that will be another Herculean effort.
Can you remind me, do revocations, do those come before us, or the supervisors at all, or is that?
The Board of Supervisors alone have the power to revoke. So you probably weren't asking for that information, but when you asked the question about the post-approval monitoring, it reminded me that that is one of the major things that we are really engaged in right now.
It's, I mean, it's good, it's part of the process. It's, you know, sad for some, and others are like, it's about time. I've heard both sides, so I got one of those letters for less than $100 balance and took care of it beginning of the year. So, you know, no discrimination, it was, you know, same treatment for everyone, so.
So if my mental math is right, that's about an average of like a $5,000 cost for to those, is that right? You said like 500 people, $1.8 million, or something like that? I don't know, just, it didn't sound like it was something that would be huge.
Yeah, so one of the things that we're seeing is that we're probably have had about 500,000 paid. So we've also got 658 permits that have been denied or withdrawn. And a lot of that account receivable is probably in those permits that are gone now.
Planning commission discussion items? Then meetings adjourned at 9:14.